Board of Appeals, please listen to the rules and procedures that we will follow for tonight's hearing.
Good evening, and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Town of Babylon zoning Board of Appeals. The following is the procedure that will be followed tonight. The matters will be called in the order they appear on the calendar, with adjourned matters being called at the end of the regularly scheduled matters. Matters cannot be heard prior to their published scheduled time. When your matter is called, please submit the affidavit of posting to the secretary, and proceed to the podium and give your name and address. The chairperson will then swear you in, and read into the record information we have from your application, comments from various town departments, and any correspondence received on your application. The chairperson will then ask you to make whatever presentation you wish to make to the board. After you have made your presentation, the board will ask whatever questions the board deems appropriate, and then we will ask for comments from the public. If you wish to speak for or against an application, we ask that you wait until you are acknowledged, come forward, give us your name and address, tell us where your property is in relation to the property that's in question tonight, and then please direct your comments to the board, not the applicant or the applicant's representative. We have to keep a record, and we cannot do that if there are people talking over each other or cross-conversations. If someone has spoken for or against an application, and they have said exactly the same thing that you wish to say, it will have the same force and effect in the record if you give your name and address, are sworn in, and say that you join in those comments. If you have anything additional to say, please don't hesitate to do so, but keep in mind that you will be given only one opportunity to speak. After the public has spoken, the board may ask the applicant to come back to answer any questions that may have come up as a result of the public comment, or for the applicant to summarize. When the applicant comes back to answer any additional questions, if that happens, that does not start a second round of public comments. Once the matter has been heard, various things may occur. The board may decide the application immediately. It may reserve decision. If the board reserves decision, that does not mean the matter is approved or denied. It just means that the board needs more time to decide, may want to go out and look at the site again, or might want to review the documents and testimony further before making a decision. In either event, the applicant will receive the board's decision in writing shortly after the board makes its decision. If the application is approved, that does not mean that you can then go ahead and start construction, or whatever it is that you requested from the board. You will have to wait for the building permit to be obtained from the building department before your go-ahead. On some occasions, the matter may be continued for another night. If it is continued, in most cases, it will be for the submission of documents, a new survey, new plans, or something of that nature. If that's the case, no one needs to come back on a new date. The documents will be submitted, and no further testimony will be taken. On rare occasions, a matter may be continued for future testimony. If that's the case, then people would have to come back to testify. If matters are adjourned at an open meeting on a scheduled date of hearing, no further notice need be given unless specifically required by the board on the date the adjournment is granted. Three rules that may affect your ability to proceed tonight. One, if the sign was not posted for 10 days, we cannot hold the hearing tonight. Two, if you commence this proceeding while you own the property, but no longer own the property, and you are here now to continue with the application, you will need either the written consent of the new owner or the new owner to be present for the hearing. This situation could come about if you sold your house or building, money was held in escrow at closing for a certificate of occupancy or permit, and you're here tonight to clear that up. Lastly, if your application is a commercial application, and it's other than a renewal, and there is more than one tenant in the building, then you need your landlord to be here. Is there any applicant that has any difficulty with those situations and would need an adjournment tonight?
Is there anyone that needs an adjournment? Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, we have two applications that are being withdrawn. Case number 25-161, 69 Abrahama Ave. in West Babylon. And case number 25-128 of 140 East Sunrise Highway in Lindenhurst. Is anyone here for any of these applications? Okay, and then we have one adjournment for case number 25-156 of 23 Chapel Place in North Babylon. That is being adjourned to October 23rd. Is anyone here for that application? Okay. So, we have application number 25-163, Bobby Joe and Anthony DiFabio. That is in North Babylon. Hi, name and address for the record.
Genero Cozzolino, 2125 Deer Park Avenue, Deer Park, New York, 11729.
And do you affirm to tell the truth?
Yes.
All right, we have a planning division memo dated September 17th, 2025. Department of Environmental Control memo dated September 23rd, 2025. This application may not result in significant impact. Of a county memo dated September 17th, 2025. This is a matter of local determination. Survey by Islandwide Land Surveyors dated June 17th, 2025. A tax map acting as an area map and...
Madam Chair, there's five photographs and a site plan by Michelangelo dated July 16, 2025.
All right, what would you like to tell us?
Good evening, Madam Chairperson, members of the board. Genero Cozzolino for the homeowner, Anthony DiFabio residing at 79 Keim Avenue, North Babylon, also known as Section 150, Block 1, Lot 53, located in the Residence B Zone. Subject property measures approximately 120 feet deep, 125 feet deep by 63 feet wide, for a total of 7,953 square feet. We are requesting relief from the board to build a new second-floor addition consisting of two bedrooms with walk-in closets, and a full bathroom with laundry included. The proposed additions require variance for side yard setback, requesting 10.5 feet instead of permitted 12 feet, a difference of 1.5 feet. Variance for aggregate side yard setback requesting 20.4 feet instead of permitted 30 feet, a difference of 9.6 feet. The second-floor addition is to be built over the existing footprint of the dwelling, not encroaching any further into the side yard setbacks. Proposed addition complies with all other zoning requirements. To answer the Planning Division's inquiry, the reason for the expansion of the dwelling is the need for more room for the DiFabios' family. And the residence will remain a single-family owner-occupied use. The addition will have no significant impact to the environment, will not affect any of the adjacent properties, and will fit in with the character and nature of the neighborhood. Thank you.
All right, so as you said, the variances are existing. We're going straight up, remain single-family.
Correct.
Okay, I have no further questions. Any questions from the board? Would anyone like to be heard on this application? For the record, there are none. All right, I'm gonna make a motion to approve application 25-163.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, good evening.
Thank you. All right, next application, application 25-162, Ketley Sylvain. This is, uh, West Babylon. Name and address for the record.
My name is Hopeton Hendricks. My address is 34 Maplewood Drive in Westbury, New York, 11590.
Do you affirm to tell the truth?
Yes.
Okay, just let me read this.
Okay.
We have a planning division memo dated September 17th, 2025. Department of Environmental Control memo dated September 23rd, 2025. This application may not result in significant impact. We have a survey by William Hogan dated September 9th, 2024. Tax map acting as an area map and...
Madam Chair, there's, uh, four photographs and a site plan by Gary M. Spinella dated August 18, 2025.
All right, what would you like to tell us?
Yes, we're requesting approval for a diminished front yard setback from 30 feet to, uh, 26.6, and a rear yard setback to be diminished from 30 feet to, uh, I mean, from 40 feet to 30.7. And the reason for that is the family decided to, uh, to stay together ever since the fire that initially occurred almost approximately a year ago. And currently, the family is actually separated because not everyone could fit in the trailer. So therefore, there are two members of the family that had to, was forced to rent elsewhere. Now, the members of the family to my right, this is Ketley Sylvain. You have Grandma. You have Tamara, Joshua, and Missin. You have Sabrina, Marcia, and Sarah. That's seven people, and that's the reason for the seven rooms. Okay, it's not a rental property in any way. It's owner-occupied and will always be owner-occupied. The building had to be reconstructed in a way because since then, she was diagnosed with a medical condition. Okay, so she has what you call hereditary ataxia. And two years ago, she was never like this. And there's no cure for it. So... Her condition is expected to, uh, to get worse because two years prior to this, she was never using this. In addition to that, Grandma recently diagnosed with Alzheimer's. And from what the board and... The board knows is that the house used to be a high ranch. And you know, from the high ranch, the stairs to actually get up to the main level, the first floor, she had to traverse those steps. And there's no way she can traverse the steps, nor Grandma. And therefore, that's the reason why they're... We're requesting the rear addition in the back for her to have a main room, and for the daughter to return, Sabrina, to return home so she could help out financially with the situation. And that's the reason for the second-floor addition for that extra room. In regards to the porch, the memorandum and concern with the porch being so expansive, I have, I have, uh, two pictures I'd like the board to actually look at. Because this request for the porch being that expansive is not something out of architectural vanity or something other than for safety. And what this picture... Can I give this? Okay. I normally don't take on projects like this, to be honest with you. But when I, when I heard what happened, I had to step in and intervene because I don't want a situation that occurred before to happen again. And it's the first time I'm ever doing work in, uh, in Babylon. And I can tell you this. The first day I walked in, just like I'm tearing up right there, I teared up when I saw Mr. Dorian Snyder on the very first day. Because it's very hard for a first responder like I was, Fire Department of New York, to rescue so many people. And not, you know, to rescue your own sister. And when I walked in and I saw your name, there was a sister named Doreen. And the situation that occurred with them, they were very lucky that everyone made it out because they were all inside the home, sitting down, not knowing there's a fire on the second floor. It was a visiting aunt that came over and walked into the house and let them know that something doesn't smell right. And to be honest with you, the way the house was configured, it being a high ranch, and their medical condition right now, I guarantee you, they would have never made it out that house, never. And that's the reason why we're requesting approval for the porch to be the way that it is because as you can see from the picture, that, that's my personal home. Right, these porches, what it does, because I'm all for rules and regulations, trust me. But there's some that needs to improve. Because here you have the board requests, not the board, but building code requests that you have egress windows on the second floor. Now, Tamara, can you stand up for a second? That's Tamara. She'll be an occupant on the second floor. To ask her to jump from an egress window just in case first responders don't arrive on time, you're dooming her. The code will be dooming her. There's no way she can make a jump from a 20, 20, 20 feet and expect to be okay. Joshua is not that much taller. Sarah is not that much taller. And Sabrina is almost the same height as Tamara. The picture that I, I just submitted was from my own personal experience. And what you see there is me actually showing you that when the porch is expansive and go across the house like that, it actually reduced the height for them to actually get themselves to safety should something like that happen again. And the reason why I bring that up is because should the stairway become engulfed in fire in the future? We're not planning on it because we, we decide to go to what they call the zero-carbon footprint. I want to be sure that they all make it out. I want to be sure they all make it out. So what you're looking at, I'm six, a little over six feet. That's my niece. And as you can see, I can easily pick her up, put her right there in the front of the roof of the, of the front porch, and remove her. And it should be the same situation with Tamara because if she should hang where the gutter is, it diminish her fall, okay, from over 20 feet to approximately three feet. And that's a huge difference. And that's the reason why we're requesting the, the front porch. Is there any other concern about? Because another thing, the, the house doesn't even, if... It should, the single and separate use, I'm kind of confused about because this property, I believe, was, uh, was in separate ownership since 1920. So I think it should, uh, fall within the single and separate use. But under the application, within a plot like that, we just came to the board for approval. And that's all I have to say. If there is any questions, I'd like to answer it.
Okay, thank you. I'll turn the hearing over to Mr. Shepherd.
How are you? Thank you.
How you doing?
Good. The reason why we ask is seven bedrooms is kind of extravagant. And, and yet also, the number of bathrooms being on different floors. Is only one gonna be one kitchen?
One kitchen.
Okay, so that's why they're asking, is if it was gonna be a two-family or if you're gonna have a second kitchen. That's what the inquiry was about, that regarding that. Now, the porch, can we reduce it at all? Can you bring it in a little bit? Make it a little shorter? I mean, you can still jump from a shorter porch as much as you could from, you know...
Okay, if you...
It's a little out of character with the neighborhood, is what, what the concern is.
Okay, I believe, um, 53 Troy Avenue, which is two blocks down, has the same thing.
Do you know if that was approved by this board?
I, I am, I'm not sure, to be honest with you. And, um, I believe there are three other homes that have porches similar to that on the same block.
I'll ask the same question, do you know if they're...
On, on the same block, but not across the entire width of the, the, the front. But like I said, the porch is to provide an exit point for everyone on the second floor. So when you have five people on the second floor, I don't want to have any worry God forbid anything like what occurred happen again. And the mechanical room for the house is right beneath the staircase. So that's my worry. Even though it's electrical, the water heater, the way that the house is configured up, because there was no way to put anything else anywhere else but right underneath the staircase in terms of the, the water heater. And that's the only concern I have with a fire in the stairwell. Should there be like an electrical fire or something like that? And everyone should be able to basically open the door, open the window, get out to the porch, get to safety just in case the staircase is, is engulfed. Now, to reduce it, I don't know how many feet you would like us to reduce it by, to bring it in how much, how many feet?
Bring it in three or four feet on each side.
Three feet on each side?
Three or four, you know, just so it's not...
Okay.
Look like, like the front of a hotel or a lobby, you know?
Okay, all right, I'll, I'll agree to that.
Submit plans for that?
Yes, sir.
All right, and, um... They said there'll only be one kitchen. And we need to do just a little bit of housekeeping here, Madam Chairman. Application needs to read all in connection. I'll make a motion that the application read all in connection with the erection of a proposed front porch and two-story rear addition.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I don't believe I have any further questions, Madam Chairman. Yes, and would you agree that you not further enclose the front porch? That it would just remain a porch?
It will remain a front porch. It will not be enclosed at all.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Would anyone like to be heard on this application? For the record, there are none. Okay, we're going to close the hearing. They're gonna resubmit plans? Leave the record open for your plans, and then you'll get the decision in the mail.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I didn't hear you.
Make a motion to withdraw 125-161.
Make a motion to withdraw application 25-161. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, next application is application 25-152 of Spark Car Wash LLC of West Babylon. And 560 Montalk Highway. Name and address for the record?
Certainly. Keith Brown, Law Firm Brown Altmann, LLP, 538 Broad Hollow Road, Suite 301 West, Melville, New York, 11747. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Just while, uh, we're getting set up, I'll get started.
Well, let me read these into the record. Do you affirm to tell the truth?
I, I do.
Oh, and here, okay. So, we have a planning division memo dated September 17th, 2025. Environmental control memo dated September 24th, 2025. We need a negli, negative declaration. We have a fire marshal report dated September 25th, 2025, with several pages of comments. Did you guys receive that?
Yes, we have.
You have, perfect. We have a survey from Control Point Associates, Inc., dated August 10th, 2023. Tax map acting as an area map. We also received correspondences, 3 through 10, from residents in opposition. And...
Madam Chair, there's 18 photographs and a site plan by Adeli Kosh dated May 8th, 2025.
And for the record, we did receive a notice from Southern County Planner that this is a matter of local determination.
I'm just gonna have all our experts move up, if that's okay. Yeah. While they're doing that, I could get started.
Please do.
Certainly. On behalf of Spark Car Wash LLC, I'm here with respect to the special exception of variance applications to develop a state-of-the-art car wash at the property located at 560 Montalk Highway in West Babylon, New York. As a matter of housekeeping, the public notice postings were performed in accordance with the town code, and proof of same was submitted in advance of this evening's hearing. With me tonight, to my left, and one person to my right, I have Mr. Orr Raitis from, uh, the Director of Real Estate for Spark Car Wash. To my right, I have Mr. Alex Holloman, PE of Bowler, the project engineer. To my immediate left, I have Gabriela de Alamedia of JK&amp;A Architecture, the project architect. Seated, uh, next to Orr in the front row here is Jack Zibura of Lewis S. Gottfried and Associates, our sound expert. On the far left in the front row, we have Mr. Nicholas Tortorella, PE of Stonefield Engineering, the traffic safety expert. And in the second row in the middle, we have Ms. Deirdre Ryan, a senior environmental planner from PW Grosser, who will discuss the car wash and the criteria for the issuance of a special exception. And finally, on the second row, on the far left, we have Mr. Paul Dykes, who is our real estate appraiser. Prior to this evening's hearing, our office submitted exhibits, renderings, and expert reports in support of the application, with the noted exception that Ms. Ryan has an additional, uh, planning report which we're gonna submit, uh, when she comes up to testify. Memorandum prepared by Brown Altmann were included with the initial submission of the application in support of the special use permit, the one area variance, and the remaining sign variances. In addition, uh, we would now like to submit to the board a precedent chart where this board has granted similar relief for the number of ground signs, the size of the ground sign, setback as it relates to the ground signs, wall sign size, the number of wall signs per elevation, and the wall sign height as measured from grade. If I may. The applicant has also had an opportunity to review the Planning Department's pre-hearing memorandum. In response, the applicant will be removing the ground sign identified as sign 6A that's located near the approach of the car wash tunnel. For the record, the other sign labeled as 6A, which is located in the car wash drive-up lane, will remain as proposed. Just by way of background, the property is owned in the E Business District and is located on the south side of Montalk Highway, also known as New York State Route 27A, approximately 102 feet west of the signalized intersection of Montalk Highway and Fleet Point Road. The site is improved with a vacant two-story building that was previously operated by a Bank of America branch with a drive-through ATM service. As can be seen from the existing site photographs, the property is completely paved with little or no landscaping. The property is in immediate vicinity of the subject site, are all zoned in the E Business District, and includes the following uses. Abutting the property to the east is an auto zone, followed by Fleet's Point Drive and an assisted living facility. Directly north of the property, on the opposite side of Montalk Highway, is a retail outlet, which includes a PetSmart and a four-leaf Federal Credit Union branch. There is also a shopping center which includes an Ace Hardware Store, a Planet Fitness, and a Starbucks. Abutting the subject property to the west is the Sunrise Senior Assisted Living Facility. And directly south of the property is an off-street parking area that's used for the neighboring medical office facility. The applicant seeks to develop the property with a car wash which will include a 4,588-square-foot building with two drive-up lanes, along with new signage and associated site improvements. Landscaping improvements will also be provided along the front, rear, and west lee property lines. We note that the site plan that's before the board this evening has already been reviewed by the planning board, and site plan approval was granted on July 28th of this year. As part of the site plan application process, an extensive review of the project was conducted by the town's Planning Division, Engineering Division, and the Town Department of Environmental Control, the town fire marshal, as well as by the town's outside traffic consultant, IMEG. We note that by memorandum dated March 31st of this year, the Town Department of Environmental Control found that the project and the car wash use, one, would not result in adverse change to existing air quality; two, would not result in a substantial... two, would not result in a substantial adverse change to the existing ground or surface water quality; three, would not result in a substantial change in traffic or noise; and four, would not result in a substantial increase in drainage problems. So with that, I want to thank you for your time. That's our overview, I would like to turn it over to Mr. Orr Raitisus from Spark Car Wash, who will further discuss the Spark Car Wash application, thank you.
Name and address for the record?
Of course. Orr Raitisus, thirty Maple Street, Unit Two, Summit, New Jersey, zero seven nine zero one.
Do you affirm to tell the truth? Do you affirm to tell the truth?
I do. Thank you, Madam Chairman, thank you, members of the Z.B.A. and the town planning staff. My name is Orr Raitisus, as Keith mentioned, I work for Spark Car Wash. Just a quick note about myself, I am a Long Islander, have lived here my entire life and raised my family here on Long Island as well. Talking a little bit about Spark Car Wash. Spark is a very unique car wash model in the industry. Some of you who may have traveled off of Long Island, particularly in the south or west, will have seen this type of model. It's called an express car wash. Now, what is an express car wash, and how is that different from a typical car wash that you'll find on Long Island? So, express car washes typically have two components that make them appear. One is self-service vacuums that are free and open to the users of the car wash. The other is that there are no employees who actually wash your vehicle or dry it. So, we have approximately three to four employees that are on property at any given time, in two shifts, but they're there primarily for the safe and efficient operation of the site. So, we'll go through what each one of those employees goes, does, as you will, as we'll talk through the site, but just want to kind of quickly differentiate what makes an express car wash different. The other thing that makes an express car wash different is the speed that you get in and out of the site. The idea of express car washes is that this is something that you can do on a multiple times per week, but definitely multiple times per month basis. That's enabled by two things, one is the speed. So, typically, a wash in the tunnel takes about two minutes and thirty seconds, and there is a quick queuing as well as a quick entry. The other thing is affordability. So, our washes start at twenty-seven dollars per month, you can do a single wash, but the greatest value is on a monthly unlimited subscription basis. So, with that membership model, you're encouraged to use the wash as frequently as you would like. So, these two things really differentiate from a traditional full-service car wash to the express wash. So, we'll talk a little bit about how do you actually use the site. So, you could see the building is located on the far eastern side of the property, and that's to allow vehicles to enter the site and, and choose, there's, immediately as they would enter the site, there's a sign that says vacuum before wash. That would be because on the left side, you can see vacuum stalls. Those vacuum stalls are there for the customer's use. That's called, what we call the Spark Park. Now, in those vacuum stalls, you also have air compress, air hoses that you can use to blow dust off of your dashboard or off of the exterior of the vehicle. You have spray bottles that are provided free of charge for cleaning windows, as well as microfiber towels to clean the windows. So, if you choose to, you could vacuum the interior of the car, there is also a, one of the very cool things is a mat cleaner. So, you take the mats out of your car, you place them into the cleaner, and they pop out on the bottom, all clean. So, you don't even have to vacuum the mats, so you only really vacuum on the inside, the crumbs, the Cheerios that the kids inevitably leave underneath the car seats. Once they're done, once you're done with the vacuuming and any associated cleaning that you would have liked to do, you enter the queue to enter the tunnel. And this is probably the most familiar aspect of the car wash experience. Specifically, since COVID, many car washes have now stopped entering your car and taking it through the tunnel. And here, you drive up and you'll be greeted by a menu board. Now, there's two lanes, one is a member lane, one is a non-member lane. What's the primary difference? The primary difference is that in the member lane, there is a license plate reader that, once you become a member for the unlimited washes, the gate will immediately open. It knows the type of wash you've selected, it knows your license plate, attaches the two things, and you enter through completely frictionlessly, frictionlessly. In the non-member lane, there, you are presented with a ATM-style kiosk that accepts cash or credit cards, and there's also a, an employee that will help you decide which wash will be best for you. They'll also be telling you about the benefits of the unlimited wash model. But they're there, they're standing there physically, there's no loud speakerphones or anything like that. They're actually there, out there with an iPad, helping you make that decision. Once you've made that purchase, then you will proceed through to the tunnel, just as if you were a member. So, either way, once you've gone through the pay station area, your vehicle is now in the queue to enter the tunnel. That's when you'll be greeted by the second employee. That second employee is called the loader, they're there primarily for your safety. The reason why is we want to make sure that the vehicle is loaded on the tracks that will bring the vehicle through. Again, if you've been to an automated car wash, you're familiar with this. You roll up and you put the car into neutral, once you've hit a certain point on those tracks. Once the car is in neutral, you let go of the steering wheel, turn off your, your automatic windshield wipers, if you've got them, and the car goes through the tunnel. And this is where the magic happens, because our washes are entirely brand-new, built from the ground up, and state-of-the-art. Using a combination of state-of-the-art equipment and chemicals and soaps, the vehicle comes out extremely clean at the end of the, of the wash. But not only does the vehicle come out clean, there, everything that is removed from the vehicle, including water during the wash, goes into our central, call it the trough, in the middle of the, of the wash. That water is then sent out to our reclaim tanks, which our engineer will talk more about. But predominantly, what that does is that allows us to recycle up to eighty-five percent of the water that's used in the wash. The soaps are taken out of the water, the water is cleaned, the water is ozonated, and it is then fit for use on the wash again. So, while most washes have to dump the water immediately after it's used on the car, we're able to continually recycle that use. Additionally, if you wash your car at home, like some people have, I, I used to, all that water that you use goes immediately into the storm drains or onto the asphalt outside of your home. So, this really helps us protect the environment by using less water per car. It works out to about twelve to thirteen gallons of water per vehicle, as opposed to eighty, which is what would be used in a full-service wash that does not have a reclamation system. So, now you've exited the tunnel to the north, and you have now a choice of turning, not a choice, you have a, a sign there that will tell you when to stop or go, when to, when to exit the tunnel, meaning that the vehicle has passed the last roller, and then you will turn and out right onto Montalk Highway. Your car will be clean, it will be dry, and you will be able to come back within a couple of days, a cup, a week or two, to, to re-wash if you'd like. So, again, like I said, we're environmentally friendly, but not just that, it's a fun experience for the whole family. Everyone likes going in, everyone likes to wash the, wash the car. Here, you don't wash the outside, but you're really helping to clean the inside. Like I said, we have about three to four employees on the site, one is there primarily just for the cleanliness of the site. So, they're there to make sure that any garbage is picked up, they're there to make sure that the towels that I mentioned are stocked, the bottles of spray cleaner are stocked and available, and they're there to really make sure that there are no issues at all at any of the vacuum stations. The other two employees are there to help you either enter the tunnel or select a wash that you're gonna choose. As far as the actual site operations, we are open every day, as being an express and a membership model, we don't close when it rains, we, we, just during major snow events, we'll close, because we want to be available and meet you at the time that you want to wash your car. Even if it doesn't make the most sense, we're not there to judge, it's there for you to use. So, we are open every day from eight AM to seven PM. We do have staff members there, one hour prior, one hour post, and their primary functions are to clean and prepare the site. So, they never leave the site a mess, and they always make sure that they start the day on the best foot forward. Trash pickup occurs at that enclosed, trashing enclosure, and that happens once per week. And we do get deliveries of our soaps, they are delivered by our own team in Sprinter vans. So, there's never any trucks on the site, except for that once-a-week trash pickup. Our peak hours are between one and three PM, and really, we find that our customers have always consistently given us very high marks for cleanliness and friendliness, and that's what we really want to bring to the West Babylon community. I, we'll now turn it back over to Keith, and we'll continue our presentation, but thank you for your attention this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Orr. Next, we have Mr. Holloman from Bowler, who is gonna walk you through the site design, layout, landscaping, and how the car wash will work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, good evening, members of the board, my name is Alex Holloman, civil engineer from Bowler, here to speak on behalf of the applicant, Spark Car Wash.
Do you affirm to tell the truth?
I do. With the summary of our application presented, I would like to discuss the major points of the project from a site engineering's perspective. The subject parcel lies along Montalk Highway, New York State Route twenty-seven A, approximately one hundred and twelve feet from the intersection of Fleet's Point Drive and Montalk Highway. In existing conditions, the subject parcel was improved by an existing two-story bank building with associated site improvements inclusive of parking, lighting, and utilities. A geotechnical investigation has been performed at the site with eight subsurface boreings concluding suitable conditions for development. This application proposes a new two-story, single-tunnel, drive-through car wash, express car wash, which will be fed by two stacking lanes, a members' lane and a non-members' lane. Combined, the stacking lanes can accommodate up to thirteen total cars in queue from the tunnel entrance to the parking area. Once through the pay station area, an emergency bailout exit is provided via east via an existing cross-access that takes you onto Fleet's Point Drive behind the existing auto zone. This is seldom used, but necessary in the event of a customer's vehicle cannot proceed through the tunnel for any reason. All customers exiting the site can elect, excuse me, all customers entering the site can elect to utilize the vacuum and car wash mash area, which Orr from Spark Car Wash presented earlier, before entering the building tunnel at no additional cost. These are self-service systems, which are equipped with tools for the customers to clean the interior of their vehicles. All, after exiting the car wash tunnel, all cars shall exit via right restriction only onto Montalk Highway. Thirteen total parking spaces are proposed onsite, including ten vacuum spaces, one accessible vacuum space, and three dedicated employee spaces. An onsite fully enclosed trash, town-compliant trash enclosure is proposed, which has adequate access for garbage pickup. Adequate onsite lighting is also proposed, which will provide visibility at low light times, but also meet town regulations. The site will connect to public water, public sanitary sewer, and will have electric telecom and gas service connections serving the car wash building. On-site stormwater management is provided, which will provide for the storage of a two-inch rainfall event in approximately a hundred and five leaching galleys or subsurface stormwater structures distributed throughout the site. Additionally, an onsite reclaim system is proposed, which will capture car wash processed water for onsite reuse within the car wash building tunnel. This is a state-of-the-art system. It is designed to further reinforce Spark's commitment to an environmentally friendly operation, utilizing the latest in water filtration and recirculation equipment and technology. This system utilizes a series of subgrade tanks outside the car wash tunnel, but also apparatus within the car wash tunnel as well. These apparatus work in concert with each other to collect the car wash processed water within a central trench before sending it out to the exterior tanks to be further processed. Once collected within the central tank, the used car wash water flows to sediment separation tanks, filtration steps, and treatment membranes, before ultimately reaching a water quality condition suitable for reuse within the car wash and per Spark's high-water quality and conditioning standards. Town-compliant landscaping is also proposed, including a variety of plantings, such as shade trees, evergreen trees, shrubs, and general ground cover. Specifically, Spark intends to plant thirteen hardy grasses of one type, twenty-three perennials of one type, sixty-two shrubs of five types, and eleven trees of three types, and twenty-four ground cover plantings of three types. These plantings are both town-compliant, but also distributed throughout the site to either screen or enhance built infrastructure of our, where our application, where it would be appropriate onsite. Regarding signs, our application requests relief for proposed onsite signage as detailed in the filed documents. More specifically, signage is proposed, including ground and building signs, along with onsite directional signage, to assist customers with onsite circulation. From a site engineer's perspective, of the seventeen ground directional signs, eleven are ground and six are directional. Sixteen of these signs are specifically meant for the safe and effective operation of the car wash. At this time, I would like to generally walk the board through a typical customer's experience, a customer's flow, coming from Montalk Highway, running through the site, before ultimately exiting onto Montalk Highway as well. Entering the site, the, a customer will see a enter sign right at the curb-cut entrance before proceeding into the, to the site, where there, we will then see to their right-hand side a sign that says vacuum shall be provided before you enter in the tunnel. So, that's a operational and safe, effective use of the site sign. Continuing on, the customer, whether electing to utilize the vacuums or not, will ultimately proceed to the two queue lanes, where they'll be met with additional signage. This signage is to direct the customer as to which side is a member's side, non-member's side, additional to cash and credit signage, before ultimately turning the corner, entering into the order point kiosk area. There are, there is one digital order board, which is directly in the median, the striped median, between the two lanes at the order point area. This digital order board is almost as if a pre-sale board, if you will, where a customer is to review options available to them if they're a non-member, that's why it's in that lane facing the non-member lane, for washes available that can be selected as you proceed further to the X.P.S., X.P.T. system, which again provides that final interface with the customer as they select what wash they'd like to proceed with. Directly above the customer is also additional signage that directs them as to member lane, non-member lane, cash or credit options. These are all concentrated in that area to, again, provide that safe and effective use as the customer decides which lane to choose, which is appropriate for them, and also what wash is appropriate for them. Continuing further, there is stop bars, which will regulate customers so that they're not both proceeding at the same time. There is signage, there is, excuse me, wording on the stop bar, stop bars, in order to provide additional signage as to the correct lane for the customer. Continuing further, the customer will then enter the tunnel, proceeding through the tunnel, before ultimately getting near the exit of the tunnel, where they will look straight ahead and find a stop-go sign. This is, as the name intends, is to tell them whether they need to stop or go as they exit the tunnel and proceed safely, ultimately ending up where they're making their choice to take a right onto Montalk Highway, where they have additional exit signage, so that they understand that that right turn is, is provided to them. Having covered signage, I would like to lastly state our application requests relief from the town's minimum rear yard requirement along the southern property line. However, I'd like to emphasize that the building portion that is encroaching into this rear yard is an architectural extension feature and not a full building section. This will be further covered by Gabriella from GKA. But I would just like to sort of hit on that, and also mention that furthermore, it should be noted that the southern property line fronts a large parking area, and, and plantings are provided, along with a six-foot vinyl fence in this area. I would like to conclude and say that our application has submitted to New York State DOT and has received approval, in addition to Suffolk County Water Authority, has received approval. The proposed building architecture has been The proposed building architecture has been coordinated with the proposed site design, meeting the programming needs of Spark Car Wash while also meeting the town's requirements. I would like, now like to welcome Gabriella from GKA to discuss further the architecture program.
Just before you do, Alex, could you just walk the board through sign number five? That's the ground identification sign?
Sure.
Right? I think we made some modifications to the design.
Yes. Sign five in the filed documents is the freestanding sign that is directly on Montauk Highway. So as Mr. Brown had mentioned before, there are some modifications being made to that, to that sign where the symbol that is plan left will be removed, and the overall area of that specification that's filed will be shrunk. That sign is located along the road and positioned in a way that it's a foot off the property line. That is an intentional placement. Again, hitting on the safe and effective operation of the, of the car wash is that it's to let potential customers and known customers on Montauk Highway know that they're approaching the car wash at an appropriate distance so that they can make an effective maneuver into the site.
So just to clarify, based on the planning staff memo that we received, there was a concession that was made to reduce the size of the sign from what was 56.74 with the logo down to 43.2, where 32 square feet is permitted. And then the relocation, instead of it being one foot from Montauk Highway, will now be four feet, two inches, where 10 is required. So we slid it back by removing that portion of the logo.
How high in the air is it? How high off the ground?
Top, the top of the sign is...
Slide down to the bottom.
Yeah, it's 15 feet, and the bottom of the, of the actual placard is 11 feet. So it's a four-foot...
Thank you.
Sign marquee. Yep.
Great. Thank you, Alex. Next, we'd like to bring up our project architect, who will present the architectural drawings for the project. Gabrielle?
Name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Gabriella Di Almeida, 36 Ames Ave, Rutherford, New Jersey.
Do you affirm to tell the truth?
I do.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Gabriella Di Almeida from GKNE Architects, and we're the architects for the proposed Spark Car Wash building. I'd like to start by speaking about the building floor plan. Please refer to Sheet A1 of the architectural submitted set. No, it doesn't look like that file is there.
Is it in their packet they received?
Yes.
Did it direct them a page or in their packet?
Sure, Page A1, it's the first page. It's where we show the first and second floor plans.
It'll be under one of the renderings, either three or four. It's part of those packets.
Yeah. We can keep this, this file up. I will speak about it later in my testimony. So this is a two-story, 4,588-square-foot structure. The first floor being a 115-foot-long wash tunnel plus a bump-out area containing a restroom, storage area, and lift and stairs up to the second floor. For reference, I'd like to note that beyond the wash tunnel entry and exit doors on the first floor, we're proposing a semi-enclosed area containing an eastern and western wall and a flat roof. These walls and roof are aligned with sound panels for sound absorption. This feature will be further explained by the acoustical expert Jack Zibora during his testimony. The second floor spans a little over half of the first floor's footprint and contains an electrical room, equipment room, office, and break room for employees. I now like to move on to the rendering package, which is the file up on the, on the screen. Please refer to the proposed view from Montauk Highway on Sheet R3.1. That's the one. The building elevations and finishes were curated following the design recommendations made by the board in previous meetings. Our main elevation facing Montauk Highway is the portion of the building containing one story only. The second story is set much farther back on the southern portion of the site. We then have a focal element, which is the tallest portion of our building, and it's where most of our signs are placed. This is also used as a connection element between the first and second floors of our building. In terms of finishes, our primary materials are a red brick veneer and a gray lap siding with six inches exposure. Our secondary material is the blue stucco on the tall accent element. These three finishes are extended by white trims and built-up cornices. Glazing is provided on the first floor at the wash tunnel wall, allowing customers to view cars going through the wash system. The office and break room on the second floor also contain glazing facing the cars at the pay station area. Before I move on to signage, I'd like to briefly explain the design and finishes of the Spark Park area. Please refer to the colored elevations on Sheet R1 of this document. The Spark Park is a unique feature that Spark provides to their customers for car mat washing. The main finishes at the Spark Park are white and gray porcelain tiles with a blue brake metal border. Moving on to signage, I will describe the signage in the order provided by Bowler's signage package, but for visuals, I like to keep the colored elevations up on the screen, please. Spark's signage package is designed to work not only as individual signs but as a tasteful complement to the building architecture and the adjacent Spark site and building signs. Starting with sign number one on the proposed east elevation. This is the elevation at the bottom of the page. Yep, number four. The sign was originally proposed as a 73.5-square-foot-in-area containing the Spark logo as well as the word Spark Car Wash. Spark believes this is an important sign as it will have visibility for traffic traveling west on Montauk Highway. However, Spark has agreed to the town recommendation made in the memo letter issued on 9/17, and will reduce the sign from 73.5 square feet to 30 square feet by removing the logo and keeping just the words Spark Car Wash. Sign number two is the sign on the proposed west elevation. This is the elevation at the top of the page, number one. The sign is 15.8 square feet and is also placed on our highest parapet wall facing the vacuum spots. The sign only contains the Spark Car Wash logo and no words. Sign number three is also on the proposed west elevation at the Spark Park area. The sign has the words Spark Park and no logos. The sign is designed for pedestrian use to direct onsite customers using the vacuum spots to walk towards the mat washer area. Lastly, sign number four is our most important sign as it is placed on the front elevation facing Montauk Highway. This is the elevation on the right side of the page, number three. The sign is 73.5 square feet in area, and it is also placed on our focal element for visibility. It contains the Spark Park logo as well as the Spark Car Wash words. In our opinion, this Spark building design is contemporary while also utilizing relevant finishes. It also utilizes architectural elements and Sparks' brand essence. This concludes my presentation unless Mr. Brown would like me to further detail any design element or the board has any questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have our sound expert, Mr. Jack Zibora. Jack?
Evening, Board.
Hello. Name and address?
Jack Zibora, 415 Route 24, Chester, New Jersey.
You're from the tell the truth?
I do.
Okay.
Thank you, Board. So we are retained to review the acoustical impacts of this proposed site. As you are well aware, your town has a local noise ordinance, and it has many components, but the ones that apply here are the limit of 60 decibels during the daytime hours. Your code defines daytime as 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. As you heard earlier, operational hours are 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. So we're within the daytime confines of the noise code. To evaluate that, we take the site plans and the manufacturer's data for the proposed systems, and we create a 3D acoustical model of the site to calculate the resulting sound levels at various properties. The manufacturer has different options for their dryers and their vacuum producers, and we made it a point here to use their low-noise units for both of those items. So the vacuum producers are equipped with the variable drives that when they start up, they don't have a loud start of noise. It's a gradual starting up and down, which reduces noise. And the dryer system of the tunnel is also their lowest noise option that they currently offer. In addition to those noise control options, we're enclosing the vacuum producers on three sides and the top with a sound-blocking and absorbing material. And as you heard earlier, we're extending the tunnels on the entrance and the exit with sides and a roof that are also sound-blocking and absorbing materials to help further reduce the sound from the tunnel dryers. Once those noise control items are in place, we're calculating the levels at the nearest residential and commercial properties to be within the noise control limits of 60 decibels during the daytime hours. As a point of comparison, we did do some measurements on the site over a 24-hour period. The metric that your code uses is the L10, which is kind of the highest 10% of sound levels for the noise code. And the L10 sound levels already existing onsite range between 53 to 65 decibels at grade and 56 to 68 decibels on the roof. So you can see that the existing sound level is just some traffic and whatnot already routinely exceed your limit, but we're going to be below the limit due to all the noise control parameters that we have proposed for the site.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Nick Tortorella, our traffic safety expert.
Evening.
Hello. Name and address for the record?
Nicholas Tortorella, T-O-R-T-O-R-E-L-L-A, 584 Broadway, Suite 310 in Manhattan.
Do you affirm to tell the truth?
I do.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the board. Again, my name is Nicholas Tortorella. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New York and a traffic engineering project manager with Stonefield Engineering and Design. So as we've discussed, our project would construct an approximately 4,800-square-foot Spark Car Wash with one wash tunnel along the south side of Montauk Highway designated as New York State Route 27A, approximately 110 feet west of the signalized intersection with Fleets Point Drive. The site's currently developed with a two-story building that previously operated as a bank with a drive-through ATM. And access to that existing site is currently provided via two driveways that are generally opposite and unsignalized right-in, right-out access that serves the Planet Fitness Shopping Center on the north side of the roadway. So our team has worked extensively with both the town planning board and town staff to develop the optimized layout and circulation plan that we're presenting this evening. The planning board approved this plan that shows the car wash building on the east side of the site next to the Autozone Building on the adjacent lot with vehicles exiting the wash tunnel at the northeast corner of the property. We are proposing to consolidate access by providing one right-in, right-out driveway at the west end of our site's frontage to Montauk Highway, where no left turns of any kind will be permitted into or out of the property. We've created one-way, counterclockwise vehicle circulation on the site and striped a channelizing island where the wash tunnel exit intersects the onsite drive aisle, so that all vehicles exiting the wash tunnel will be directed to immediately exit the site as well by making a right turn back to Montauk Highway. This circulation pattern eliminates potential conflicts between vehicles entering the site and those exiting the wash tunnel. It promotes a continuous flow of traffic throughout the site, and it minimizes our project's impact to eastbound traffic flow on Montauk Highway. I'm not going to belabor the overall circulation plan that we've already discussed, but I do want to touch on two quick points related to the layout and circulation. So at the southeast corner of the site, the existing connection to the adjacent Autozone property will be maintained but as a one-way, eastbound, egress-only connection that will only serve as the car wash's bailout lane. For example, in the rare instance that a customer gets into the pay station queue, arrives to the kiosk, and then for some reason decides that they no longer want to wash their vehicle, the dedicated employee at the kiosk will open the chain between the properties, direct that vehicle to exit through the bailout lane through the Autozone property to Fleets Point Drive. That striped drive aisle, if you can bring up the rendering, might see it a little bit clearer. There it is. Yeah, the striped drive aisle between the trash enclosure and the pay station gates will be reserved for garbage vehicles and emergency vehicles only. The garbage trucks will drive southbound in the one-way drive aisle adjacent to those vacuum spaces. They'll access the trash enclosure. They'll pull through that striped lane between the enclosure and the pay station. And similarly to the bailout lane, they will exit the site via that cross-access through Autozone to Fleets Point Drive. Emergency vehicles would follow that same circulation pattern. But I think, again, it's important to note that that bailout lane connection through Autozone to Fleets Point Drive is not a standard driveway, and we expect it to be used a maximum of one, maybe two, times per day. My office also prepared the traffic report that was submitted to the board in advance of this evening's hearing. And as part of that, we prepared a trip generation analysis based on data published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, or ITE, in their recent release of the 12th Edition Trip Generation Manual, which indicates that the proposed Spark would generate approximately 110 total trips during the weekday evening peak hour and approximately 145 during the critical Saturday peak hour. These are the sum of both entering and exiting trips. I-Meg, who's the town's traffic engineering consultant, reviewed our report and agrees with our conclusion that the project will not significantly or adversely impact traffic operations on the adjacent section of Montauk Highway or at the nearby intersection with Fleets Point Drive. To supplement that conclusion, we also prepared a traffic capacity model for Montauk Highway and Fleets Point Drive, which indicates, excuse me, that the intersection will operate consistently in the future with Spark as it will in the future without it. The model shows a nominal increase in overall intersection delay, less than approximately four seconds on average during the key peak hours, thereby providing that technical confirmation that development of our site will not significantly impact traffic operations at that critical intersection. The traffic model also indicates that under typical peak hour conditions, the projected eastbound queue on Montauk Highway approaching Fleets Point Drive will not extend back far enough to the west to impede operations of our proposed site driveway, which is about 160 feet west of that stop bar. As Mr. Holloman said earlier, the New York State DOT has also reviewed our project as part of the highway work permit application, which is required because the site fronts a state highway, and approved the development of our proposed car wash with one right-in, right-out driveway with the understanding that it would not significantly impact operations or traffic flow on their roadway. I just want to close with two quick operations items, which is when customers arrive to Spark, onsite signage and the employees will direct the customers to use any of the 10 vacuum spaces prior to entering the wash tunnel. I do want to note, one of those vacuum spaces is designated as an ADA accessible space, so nine vacuums would be available to all customers. Based on the Spark's operational expertise, approximately half of their customers choose to vacuum their vehicle during a visit to a site, with these customers spending on average about seven minutes using a vacuum space. So if you assume that average seven-minute turnover rate, those nine vacuum spaces can accommodate 77 customers in one hour, which is higher than the projected total visitation during that critical Saturday peak hour, even if every single customer chose to vacuum their car. There will also be the three parallel spaces on the west side of the drive aisle that will be dedicated to the onsite employees, meaning that the proposed onsite parking supply, 10 vacuum spaces, three employee spaces, would meet code requirements and be sufficient to accommodate the peak demand. For inbound queuing, the site design provides 10 total vehicle stacking spaces in the designated lanes that lead to the pay stations. These 10 stacking spaces are provided, as we've talked about, in the two separate lanes, the interior lane, which is designated for members only, and the exterior, slightly longer lane, which would be designated for non-members. Member vehicles are typically processed through those screening gates using the license plate recognition software, or infrastructure, I should say, which functions like an EZ Pass gate, and results in those transaction times between 10 and 15 seconds. Non-member vehicles would purchase a standalone car wash at the pay station kiosk with the help of a dedicated employee, and even without the license plate recognition, those transactions on average typically take between 35 and 50 seconds. So now if every transaction at both gates took 50 seconds, the two pay stations could process more than 140 vehicles in any given hour, which is almost double the projected visitation during the highest single peak hour... visitation during the highest single peak hour, which is expected on a Saturday afternoon. These gates will process the customers at a rate where the queues will not extend back far enough to impact onsite circulation or maneuverability into or out of the vacuum spaces, thereby minimizing congestion that could occur in the onsite drive aisle and our project's impact to eastbound flow on Montauk Highway. The last thing I want to bring up is just one specific comment that was submitted this evening by Mr. Mark Maculitis, which identified concerns about Spark vehicles queuing back onto Montauk Highway, which I believe I've just addressed, in addition to how much he needs to slow down in an active traffic stream in order to make an eastbound right turn from Montauk Highway to Fleet's Point Drive, which, to be fair, it is a slightly acute angle turn, so I very much understand where he's coming from. I'd like to state for the record that presence of an active commercial driveway upstream of Fleet's Point Drive will inherently result in lower eastbound travel speeds in that southern lane because cars will already be slowing down in order to turn into our site. Our driver will also provide excellent sightlines in both directions, even though realistically you only need to look left out of a right egress driveway. And therefore, I don't expect that development of Spark will exacerbate the residents' existing concerns about having to slow down and make that acute angle turn from Montauk Highway to Fleet's Point Drive. I'm happy to field any questions from the board, or I'll turn it back over to Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Next, we have Ms. Deirdre Ryan. She's Senior Environmental Planner with PW Grocer. She has her report, and I have a copy of the submission letter to go along with it. Thank you.
Deirdre Ryan, PW Grocer, 630 Johnson Avenue, Bohemia.
And do you affirm to tell the truth?
I do.
Okay.
Good evening, Chair, members of the board. I'm Senior Environmental Planner with PW Grocer, previously a planner for Town of Islip and Senior Planner for Port Jeff. I just want to summarize the proposed project with regards to the special exception and the variances proposed for tonight's development. The proposed project will not prevent the orderly or unreasonable use of adjacent properties. This project is going into a currently vacant bank property. It's going to revitalize a site that's currently sitting vacant and is using, actually being used as kind of a second property, a second parking lot for AutoZone, based on my own site inspection. When I went there the other day, I saw a lot of cars that were using it as parking for AutoZone, as a cut-through to avoid the intersection. So right now, we just really want to revitalize a site that's kind of sitting as a blighted property along Montauk Highway. There's also currently, when you look at the property, there's absolutely no landscaping. It's completely pervious pavement. There's overgrown from other properties that are leaking onto the site. There's a lot of debris in the corners that's just sitting there, a lot of garbage collecting, broken pavement, broken concrete that's along it. There's two curb cuts that are just all broken up. So by adding this development and adding in the one curb cut, it's actually going to enhance the streetscape because it's going to provide the one curb cut that allows a lot more foliage along the street, and it's adding 18% landscaping to, right now, 0% landscaping. The lot area is exceeding the current code right now. We're also exceeding the frontage for what's proposed according to town code and as well as the side yard. We're meeting the height and other requirements as well. We're adding another business to, right now, what currently has bringing in no tax revenue, and we're also adding in jobs during the construction process as well as during the operations. There's going to be not a huge amount of staff, so it's not going to be a lot of changeover and a lot of people, as previously testified, but it will have a few workers that are coming on and off the site, and they're going to be, as previously said, along the western property lines, so kept out of the way but still working on the site and working to keep the property much cleaner than it is currently. Also, as previously testified, the traffic is not going to cause any undue impacts to what's happening on Montauk Highway. It's not going to be impacting it at all. It's not going to be leaking onto Montauk Highway. There's going to be no parking that's currently allowed on Montauk Highway. It's not going to be impacting it in that way or causing any environmental issues that are going to be impacting anything with regard to dust, with regard to odors, or anything like that. There's going to be plenty of dust controls, wetting of the dust during construction, as well as the workers are going to be arriving, as previously said, before and after the property to make sure the property is upkept and stays an upstanding property during and within the community. We don't want this to be something that gets to the wayside. It's not going to be like some of the other properties or any other property they might see that becomes something that's downtrodden. We don't want anything like that to happen. We want this to be an upstanding part of society, especially part of this community. There's also, there's no churches or theaters or recreation that's going to be, that's in the area that this would interfere with, so that won't be any part of the issues as well. With regards to the variances that are proposed on the property, there's only three signs that are actually going to be seen from Montauk Highway. Like any business, this needs a ground sign. Most of the other businesses on the property all have ground signs. They all have signs that are seen along Montauk Highway when you're driving along. The facades, some of the facades that are along Montauk Highway have two or three facial signs. This one is only proposing one, and it's just for the logo, just to be seen. It's not something that's going to be flashing. It's not going to be something that's obnoxious, that'll distract the drivers or anything like that. It's just going to be something that's going to blend in, that's going to just be seen like any other business that you're going to see across the street or down the road. One of the other ground signs that's going to be seen is also just an entrance, just for safe entry on and off the site. We just want to have enough signage for people to navigate and have fluid circulation throughout the property so that there won't be any confusion. This is a one-way circulation, so we want to make sure that everyone that's driving on the property is safe and circulating correctly. With regard to feasibility, if you were to move the building, any part forward with how narrow this site is and with the length of the building itself, it really would cause like another curb cut. And as I said before, if you were to create two curb cuts, it would start getting rid of the landscaping. We don't want to get rid of the landscaping. We want to try and bring in as much greenery as possible to the property right now, so we don't want to get rid of that. With the extension to the back, it's just an essential feature that we want to add on to the back. It creates an over partial to the cars that are going into the tunnel. It's adding to it. It has sound attenuation, and we're going to be adding barriers and canopies that'll help block anything that would impact the neighbors to the south. If you were to look at the property to the south, that would be the most impacted by that encroachment. It's actually very far into its own property, so I don't think that there would be, in my expert opinion, I don't think that it would really be impacted by the tunnel. And as previously testified, we are trying to stay within, we are staying within the noise limits of the town code. In addition to also, again, supplying a lot of landscaping along all the western and southern property lines. So again, trying to beautify the property as well as being as respectful as possible to all of our neighbors. With regard to substantial variances, the encroachment to the rear is only a 26% relaxation. I don't believe that that's a huge substantial. I don't think that's substantial at all. And again, it's very essential to this dynamic on the property. It adds a lot to the tunnel and adds a lot of sound attenuation. It helps a lot with what's currently happening and helps block a lot of the impacts that might happen on the site otherwise. Again, the signs, a lot of them are wayfinding. A lot of them help the customers onsite. There's the members lane, the non-members lane, and a lot of the signs will help people when they get onsite to know where to go, to know where they need to park, to know where the vacuums are, things like that. I don't believe that this would cause any adverse impacts to the community. A lot of the signs are internal. They won't be seen by any of the neighbors. There's only the three signs, the two in the front and the one facial sign that would even be seen by anyone from the outside. And again, it's along Montauk Highway, and like any other business that's along Montauk Highway, they all have signs that would be seen from that road. With self-created, yes, the signs are self-created and the extension is self-created, but I think that the benefit of the variances kind of outweigh what they could bring to the neighborhood, and they redevelop a vacant property that, right now, is a blight to what is on Montauk Highway, and it's bringing a lot of business and tax revenue right now to something that is crumbling in a vacant state. The proposed action is consistent, I believe, with all the standards and evaluations, in my expert opinion, and the required variances by the board, I would believe, would be appropriate. But I just want to reiterate that, again, I do think that this is a blighted property, and I do think that the redevelopment of this property would be beneficial to the neighborhood. I think it puts in a lot of safety issues with a lot of the signs. We're trying to put in a lot of the signs to make sure that no one kind of crosses, again, crosses incorrectly. Right now, there are two signs, so you don't make the right on, so you don't make the left out. We're trying to keep that in and try and make sure that people navigate throughout the site correctly and there's no issues with according to traffic, no issues kind of going in and out of the site, as well as still keeping with the fire codes and building codes and making sure that everything is kept in accordance with all the town codes as well.
Thank you, Deirdre.
Thank you.
And finally, our final expert tonight is Mr. Paul Dykes, our licensed, New York licensed real estate appraiser, will provide an overview of his appraisal report. Paul?
Good evening, Paul Dykes, Dykes Realty Advisors, 223 Wall Street, Huntington, New York.
And you affirm to tell the truth?
Subject is situated in a commercial road within a E-business zone abutting an AutoZone to the east and across the street from a commercial shopping center. Situated to the south of the property is a medical office building. Spark is looking to redevelop the site with a new car wash to pick it in the site plan. In accordance with the town code, the applicant is requesting a special exception for car wash use. In my research with the town, I found three similar car washes in a business E-zone, all abutting residential use, all granted special use. They're in my report, the address at 1289 Deer Park Avenue, 144 East Sunrise Highway, and 1680 Deer Park Avenue, all business E-zone. They were granted special use for car wash. So in brief, in my review of the site and the overall character of the surrounding neighborhood, with consideration given to prior decisions and supporting facts, it is my opinion the proposed car wash will not have an adverse impact on the neighborhood and is in keeping with similar exceptions granted to other car washes in the town.
Thank you, Paul. That concludes our presentation. We're here to answer any questions that the public or the board may have.
Perfect, thank you very much. Attorney hearing go over to Mr. Shepherd.
Thank you. You stand up. I'm sorry. I, uh, thank you. It was very thorough, very, um, you covered all the, crossed all your Ts, dotted all your Is. Behind you, you're going to see a bunch of your neighbors. I'm going to tell you that the one thing that we're concerned with is you need to be good neighbors. I want to talk to you about a few things. I have a few questions, and I want to verify a couple of things that your gentleman, some statements that you made.
Certainly.
Number of employees was three or four?
Three to four, depending on the shift.
Will be, and that'll be, you said there'll be one dedicated to cleaning up the property?
No, actually, I'll bring up Mr. Raitis to talk to you about that.
Somebody said, I'm not sure.
Yes.
You gave me a lot, so.
Yes, yeah, sure.
Tried to digest it all.
No, it's better to clarify. So, three to four, depending on the, how busy we believe the site will be that day. So typically, and you guys are familiar with this, as we all are as Long Islanders, when they throw a lot of salt out on the road, typically five days later, there are a lot of people at car washes. And that's when we will typically call in that fourth person, really to help make sure that we can have a safe and efficient operation on the site. And so typically, there will be three on almost any normal day. They do work in two shifts, and there are 10 to 12 employees total that are employed at the site, but they don't all come to the site at any one given time. There is one person, who I mentioned, is responsible for maintaining the Spark Park, which is where there's the vacuums and all the accessory equipment that you can use to clean your vehicle. That person is also tasked with cleaning up the site. That means anything, any garbage that's on the floor, but also emptying the trash containers that are available to the customers at the vacuums. So customers can, like I said, empty, whether it's Cheerios or wrappers or receipts, they can put that into a trash can. They empty those trash cans and put those trash bags into the trash enclosure that then gets picked up once per week. So they're dedicated not just to the servicing of the Spark Park, but also then making sure that anything that's maybe blown onto the site gets picked up and gets put into the trash.
There'll be a lot of that blowing off dashboards and vacuuming and all of that stuff. Now, on the second floor, is it an employee's room and an office? Is there a manager? What's the office? What's the purpose?
Correct. There is a site manager that they have an office where they will work out of. It's also a place for us to hold meetings with our team, so we do have district managers that travel from site to site, and it's, there is an employee break area. So we like for our employees to have a place where they can then take a break. There's a microwave, a refrigerator, that they can store food for lunch, things like that.
And we have three designated parking spaces for the employees?
That's right. On the western side of the site, there's three parallel parking spaces.
All right. Might as well stay there for a minute.
You got it.
And the, the, the water's going to be recycled, 85% we said?
Correct. So 85% of the water that's used in the wash process is recycled. It's recycled until it can't be used any further. So, I mean, you don't kind of store specific water, but as it's cleaned, there is a certain amount of water that is put out into the sewer system, and that's just the natural process of cleaning that water.
Okay, and you said that there was chemicals and soap? Or is that just?
So the soaps are the chemicals, right? They're diluted, and then they become kitchen-grade biodegradable soaps. So there's nothing, there's no harsh chemicals, and again, that has all been proven through our engineers' submission to the Suffolk County Water Authority?
Department of Health.
Department of Health.
On the, you mentioned people throwing down ice. I can tell you that you better have plenty of it there when they're leaving, when they're exiting in head weather. You're going to need some kind of, because the water's going to freeze, and when it's slow and fast and slow and fast. And another thing I want to point to you is, I bank right across the street at the, it's Four Leaf now.
Oh, Four Leaf, yes, yes.
And there's a right-in and a right-out there, and I can tell you, anytime I go to the bank, there are people violating that. Nobody, they run right over the concrete and go make the left-right in and a left-right out. So I'm sure they're going to do it on your side of the street. I mean, I know you're taking every precaution, maybe some kind of stances or something in the way, I don't know, but.
I'll let the-
I'm telling you what happens on the other side of the street, and every time I go there, I witness at least one car violating it, so.
I'll let the traffic engineer talk about the, or the site engineer talk about the actual ability to install anything. I think that's something that was requested from New York State DOT not to be installed. But as far as the exit driveway, you are correct, and it's not something that we haven't thought about. There is a radiant heat system that's used for that driveway, so it's concrete, it's not asphalt. You can kind of tell in the drawing there that it's a different color from the parking lot, that whole apron is heated, so that is to prevent it from exactly what you're talking about, freezing in the winter months.
And the tenant or the occupant or whoever it is just before is a nursing home. I happen to know, I've worked-
Oh, yes.
In a prior life, I worked in constructing it, and there's, right on the end of it is the Alzheimer's unit.
Is the what? I'm sorry?
Alzheimer's.
Ah.
And there's a lot of people, a lot of old people coming in and coming out. You're also on a bend there, coming around Montauk Highway. So you're in and out in your traffic issues, you're going to have to be really careful about. I'm just, you know.
Yeah, our site engineer did create an exhibit to show the view triangle, they call it, and happy to have him speak to that and then also speak to the driveway and in terms of the traffic mitigation that you had mentioned. Is there any other things you'd like to ask me or for me to respond to before we ask him to talk about those two items?
You said you're from New Jersey. You need to be good neighbors.
Well, I'm not from New Jersey. I'm from Long Island.
You're from Long Island. So many-
Please, come on.
I'm telling you right now.
The company, the company is based in New Jersey, but.
An awful lot of people are very apprehensive about this, and we're gonna hear from them. So I'm, I'm telling you right now, you know, I don't want to say that we're the big bad guy, but you're gonna be put on a short leash until that you can, you know.
And, and I'll tell you this, our plans are not just to have one location on Long Island, we have a couple of applications, one in, in Town of Hempstead, one in, in Town of Smithtown, and we really are, one of the things that you'll see, and you can go online, we do have open locations currently in New Jersey, you'll never see such rave reviews of a site, of a, of a car wash. I mean, I was shocked when I joined the company at how much people love these locations, and a lot of it, it's, a lot of the discussion, you'd think they'd be talking about the cleanliness of their car, they'd talk about the cleanliness of the site. And we really believe that it's super important that the customers feel clean when they're on the site. So that's the interior of the tunnel is also cleaned. On a rainy day like today, we would be open, but our team would be inside, power washing the inside of the tunnel, because we have bright lights on when you're in there to make sure that you can see that every bit of that tunnel is clean, because you can't clean a dirty car with dirty equipment. So really, really important to us.
Okay, and then before you leave, I just want to, one more thing. Your hours of operation, you said you're seven days a week, from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.?
That's correct.
I'm gonna read to you, if approved, with condition, the zoning board of appeals reserves the right to impose restrictions on the hours of operations.
That's right. Yeah, that was in.
Acceptable.
Yeah, that was in the, in the memo, yep.
I don't think at this time I have any.
We talked about it earlier, yeah. You want to talk about the traffic?
Alex is gonna go through the sight line.
So, an analysis was performed for the right turn out from the Spark car wash. What we're seeing here in this exhibit is a colored exhibit that shows the sight line required for safe procedure leaving the, leaving the site. So in a right turn procedure, the driver has stopped as the stop sign requests and looks to their left. We have a clear line of sight where the analysis is showing, and things that would prohibit a clear line of sight are steep elevation changes or dramatic turns in the road. As the exhibit is showing here, as again, the driver's head is there looking to the left, they have clear road to look, and this is indicative of the DOT approval which we have received. So a clear and safe maneuver can occur from the Spark car wash exit.
I have one more question. Excluding the employees parking, what's the total capacity of cars on the site? Vacuum, going in, being washed, in the tunnel?
The total? It's, yeah, come on up.
So, we're talking about three employee vehicles, that's three, 10 vacuums, 13, 10 vehicles queued in the pay stations, 23, four between the pay station and the wash tunnel entrance, 27, 130-foot-long wash tunnels, so conservatively six in the tunnel, 20-foot a car, so you're at 33. You get three between the wash tunnel exit and the street, 36, and, yeah, I would say a minimum of 36. If you really needed to for some reason, you could queue additional vehicles in the drive aisle and then wait for the wash tunnel queue to dissipate, and then clear out vacuums if you had to, but I would say a minimum of 36, I believe.
So if I didn't want a vacuum though, I would drive right in and stay on, stay in line there?
Correct, yeah, you'd go right to the pay station.
Oh, 36 cars?
36 cars, I would say minimum.
Saturday afternoon.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other board members have questions?
Okay, let me just do some housekeeping really fast, because there were two applications for you guys, and you presented it together, so I just want to read into the record the sign application. So that is case number 25-157 for Spark Car Wash. We have a planning and vision memo dated September 17th, 2025, environmental control memo dated September 23rd, 2025, this application may not result in significant impact, Suffolk County memo dated September 17th, 2025, a decision of local determination, a survey by Control Point Associates dated August 8th, 2023, a tax map acting as an area map and.
Madam Chair, there's 18 photographs, a site plan by Daley College dated July 3rd, 2025.
Okay.
Yeah, just to clarify the record too, it's application 25-152 was for the one area variance, and an application 25-157 was for the sign variances.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you hear that?
Right, with the two concessions? Sure, there, there are reductions, so it shouldn't affect the quality of the case.
Correct.
That's fine, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so anyone like to be heard? Good, okay, thank you.
Can we go over, you said they were getting removed, this sign was getting removed?
6A, it's the one closest to the tunnel, which is right there. Sorry. Can you see that? It's the one closest to the tunnel on left-hand side, as you enter the tunnel. 6A. There's actually two 6As, so the other one is over here by the pay station. The second one was the reduction of the ID sign out front.
And you said one of the wall signs was being reduced?
Yeah, yeah, the removal of the tall one, the logo off the tall one, which is sign one. Is the ID? Yeah.
Okay, so do you see where she's, she has the pointer at?
Yes.
We would like some clarification on that sign.
Sure. Alex, you wanna go through it? The purpose and where it's located?
Yes, so in the filed documents, the 6A sign, which is on the screen, was located in two areas. One is being removed, right in front of the entrance to the tunnel. The one is, that is to remain, is in the pay kiosk location area and the two queue lanes. It is facing the non-members lane as a visual presentation of the, it, it's a menu. It lists off the washes that are available to the customer, that then they can select it at the XPT system next to it, which is the pay kiosk.
Okay. It's a menu sign.
It's a menu sign. It's a, it's a video menu sign.
And then these are the, the kiosk?
That is correct, so.
So these little symbols are the signs underneath?
Correct, and we, the applicant encapsulated that whole area, not just the sign at the bottom, in order to conservatively present the aspect of the sign.
Are any of the other signs video signs?
No.
Thank you. Electronic, lit, lit up, or just regular?
There, the stop-go has a red and green element to it, others are just illuminated.
Okay. Thank you. All right, you guys are good. Board? All right, would anyone like to be heard on this application? One by one. Okay, in the hat. Name and address for the record?
My name is Joshua Sackter, I live at 57 Cutter Place, West Babylon, New York.
And do you affirm to tell the truth?
Of course.
Okay.
Good evening, members of the board, thank you for allowing me to speak. I stand here on behalf of my neighbors to urge you to deny the proposed car wash near our residential community. I understand that some people may see convenience or economic benefit in having a car wash nearby, but those short-term consequence, excuse me, those short-term conveniences do not outweigh the long-term risks to our safety, our health, and our community character. Our neighborhood is a dead-end neighborhood set of streets off of Fleets Point Road, connecting to Montauk Highway. Already, this corridor is dangerously congested. On Fleets Point Road, we have an Autozone, a physical therapy clinic, an immense Bristol nursing home. Driving into Fleets Point is already like running through a gauntlet of deadly accidents waiting to happen. With teenagers and others speeding, making loud noises out of the Autozone, elderly drivers coming from the nursing home, and patients leaving from medical appointments, adding a car wash with a steady stream of vehicles pulling in and out all day is not just inconvenient, it's reckless. The applicant has pointed out that the project has received approval from the Suffolk County Water Authority, but let's be clear, that approval only addresses water usage and hookups. It does absolutely nothing to evaluate the increased traffic hazards, the constant noise, or the quality of life impacts on the residential dead-end street neighborhood near me. The SCWI approval does not mean the project is safe or compatible with the neighborhood or appropriate for this location. It only means the developer can connect water lines. The real question, real questions for this board remain, will this facility make our streets more dangerous, our homes less livable, our houses less valuable, and our environment more fragile? And the answer is yes. If most cars exit onto Montauk Highway, and few onto Fleets Point, as he had said, you know, one of the gentlemen had said, the increased volume will cause backups at the exit, at the intersection of Fleets Point and Montauk Highway, causing risky turns, and more traffic conflicts in an area already overburdened. Studies consistently show that each new driveway or access point raises the risk of crashes, especially where seniors, patients, and car enthusiasts are present. The bottom line is, there may be a serious deadly accident if this plan goes forward. Noise is another major issue. A car wash is not a quiet neighbor. High-pressure hoses, vacuums, pumps, dryers will operate from seven, excuse me, from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., I think you guys corrected, to 7:00 p.m. 11 hours of daily disturbance. Research shows traffic and industrial noise harms health, disrupts sleep, increases stress, increases environmental pollutants, and lowers property values. It is incompatible with our residential community. We must also consider the environmental impact. The proposed site is near a wildlife habitat near Fleets Point Road. Even if the area that I'm speaking about is not formally designated as a natural preserve, natural or semi-natural land buffers, undeveloped land, canal edges, and vacant land function as habitat areas for animals. You see, wildlife doesn't care about formal zoning. Birds, amphibians, small mammals, insects, all use patches of vegetation, edges, and quiet areas. So if there's any undeveloped land or natural buffer near Fleets Point Road, it hosts a habitat, and it does near Fleets Point Road. Additional constant traffic runoff and noise will disturb local animals and degrade the natural environment near us. More cars mean more exhaust, it's common sense, and poor air quality for residents, particularly for children and the elderly. It's not simply a matter of convenience, it's a matter of health, safety, and protecting the character of our neighborhood. A car wash belongs on a commercial strip designed for heavy traffic, not at the fragile entrance to a quiet dead-end residential community or near it. In closing, I urge you not to be swayed by the fact that one agency approved the water connection or these experts here tonight, that does not answer the real questions this board must decide. Picture our community, families walking, seniors driving to appointments, children playing, and the wildlife just beyond the road. Now add a steady stream of cars queuing, engines idling, hoses roaring, day in and day out, that is not progress, it is preventable harm. Convenience should never come at the cost of increased accidents, injuries, or the safety of our children and seniors. Once someone gets hurt, you can't take that back. For the safety of our neighbors, for the peace of our home, for the protection of our environment, I respectfully urge you to reject this proposal now and forever. Thank you.
Thank you. Name and address for the record?
Hi, Vincent Marino, 53 Cutter Place.
And do you affirm to tell the truth?
I do. Okay. You know, we sit here, listen to everybody here, and we heard the words, you know, this is a state-of-the-art facility. So if the average car wash does 30,000 cars a year, and this is a state-of-the-art facility, they're gonna do more, and I would expect them to, because it's a state-of-the-art facility. But my concern is, what my, my neighbors' concerns are, is that how can you give us approximate peak time when your business is based on weather and climate? Your peak time could be at 6:00 o'clock at night, your peak time could be at 8:00 in the morning, when the sun is out. The other concern is when we know that, oh, it's 80 cars a day, well, that's really not that accurate, because we know, including myself, I've never gotten my car washed on a Tuesday afternoon at 1:00. I just haven't. It's always Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So now, when you have 30, 35,000 cars, okay, now it's not spread out over 52 weeks evenly, it's spread out over 52 weekends. And that's, that's where my concern is. There is a bus stop right there. Mr. Shepherd, you are absolutely right, I see those people jump all the time, it's gonna happen coming this way, that is a big concern of ours. And quite honestly, our residents don't want any traffic coming into Fleets Point, we have a fear of that. I, I don't know what their plan is, if it's a gate, if it's a solid wall, if it's a curb, but we don't want anything like that. We're trying to minimize any kind of flow coming into there. We, we deal with traffic congestion with Autozone, we deal with the, with the Bristol, even if you add, you can't tell me you're gonna add one or two cars a day on somebody coming onto Fleets Point, that's not accurate, when the majority of your business is going Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And we, and we all know that. So the current concern is the traffic, there are a lot, a lot of people walking on, going eastbound on Montauk Highway, and my fear is someone's gonna come ripping out, and within the first week, there's gonna be a serious accident. And we're also concerned with people not, not getting their car exactly the way they want, maybe it's a little wet, and they're gonna come down our block zipping down just to, just to dry it off and come back out. So we, we do have a lot of traffic concerns, our concern is keeping them off our block, but you cannot tell me that there is a peak time in the car wash business from 1:00 to 3:00, when you're based on, you know, based on the weather. And that's our biggest concern. Our concern is the weekends, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. All right?
Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, Anthony Laurel, 17 Cutter Place.
And do you affirm to tell the truth?
I do. Good evening, members of the board. As we said, being good neighbors, correct? None of us who live in this development were notified of this. So pardon my comments and notes tonight, because this is the first time I've seen any of it. We had to hear from other neighbors who just started calling, 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 knowing that it's one way in, one way out. We believe that should have probably been something that even if, you know, an invitation to come, take a look and see what we're doing, just so we know. Regardless of that, I do appreciate that it's an empty lot, and I do like the fact of making it to something better, because it has been an eyesore forever. I just feel that sitting here, and I do want to respect everyone's time, but seeing this for the first time, I see so many issues that are not addressed. And pardon my notes, because I was taking them as we were going, and I don't want to take everyone's time and go through everything but simple things. Number one, the traffic study. We're gonna go and we're gonna make that right-hand turn, what about the people who are going westbound? Where are they gonna turn around to come back out to go westbound? Into our dead-end community, where we currently have very little traffic, and all our children play outside in the streets, and everything's a dead end. We also have our private marinas down there, where people are gonna find out, oh, there's water, let's go sit and hang out down there. Increased traffic is increased danger, it's also increased potential of crime, of introducing people into a neighborhood that's very little traveled, which is why we purchased. of introducing people into a neighborhood that's very little traveled, which is why we purchased there. Now, if you look at the listings, we purchased the homes because we live in the Landings. We work very hard to do this. And by all real estate agents, it's perfectly located south of Montauk Highway, a beautiful cul-de-sac neighborhood where residents enjoy a strong sense of community, aided by reduced traffic and increased safety for children, a truly quiet place to live with beautiful architecture, atmosphere, bay, boating, dog-friendly, close-to-village amenities. There's no way you can tell me that our traffic is not increasing, because everyone westbound is going to turn around on our blocks. They're not just gonna pull in and make a three-point turn, which is another issue. They're gonna go down and start driving around, racing through our neighborhood. That was the first thing that I picked out. If we do look at the lot line here, like we said, everyone making a right, we know no one obeys that. Well, that's something we could address with landscaping, boulders, curbs, small bollards, something, because they will jump the curves. I am in a similar industry, and I see all the dead plants run over all the time. That's why nothing grows in those areas. Site capacity. We're looking at 12 cars on there. I counted them. That's what it's gonna be. And I'm assuming we're gonna go to the vacuums first, then we're gonna go to the line to get cleaned. We made a comment earlier that half of the people are just gonna be coming in to get the car cleaned, not using the vacuum. That line is going to extend out. If that line extends out, we have three parking spots for three employees, but where's the fourth one parking, which is another issue? How would the people backing out of that vacuum stall to get in line? So that becomes an issue where I think backup is gonna happen. And there's gonna be outflow. We talked about sound. We're using PVC fencing, which is one of the worst acoustical materials out there, it echoes all sound. So we would appreciate some sort of sound deadening of a wood or a concrete potential wall. The landscaping is not, is short, why do we not have tall screening around everything? The easement use is putting cars out to our road. I understand there's gonna be a chain, but a chain's not gonna stop that garbage from blowing into our neighborhood, nor will it stop sound. Wooden gates. Set, you know, would absorb sound. It would stop the debris from blowing out. Again, I don't want to take everyone's time, but I feel like we need more time to review this, to know that we feel comfortable with the situation here. A 15-foot-high sign, is that sign illuminated? Because then, at that height, it is visible. You know, the gate should be locked at all times, if they're saying it's just for emergency. But, you know, the site size, what if there is a vehicle fire? How is everyone getting out, especially if you're locking that gate? Which should be, because we don't want everyone coming out that way. Where is the emergency vehicles gonna come in and out? They're saying, you know, 110, 140 cars, it will back up on the Montauk Highway. You know, there is no way that it can't, especially after snowstorms. And after snowstorms, inherently, the roads are in worse condition. Just the side of the road, you know, the shoulders are shrunk down. Stopping, when there are cars stopped in an active roadway, is much harder. And again, you know, like I said, time-wise, I can go through a lot of them, but I was only able to, like, take notes as we go through. We are directly, the entrance and exit is directly across from another one, which means there are intersecting vehicles. Normally, I know safe routes, they try to offset entrances. Last year, a car drove right through the front of AutoZone. Last year, another child, someone got killed on an accident rate over there. Every time we leave there, it is a nightmare, because people are always racing to get that line. If there is a backup, I know we say the distance, people are gonna slow down to make that right. I can't tell you the amount of times that, because I drive a pickup truck, I have to slow down a little more, my turning radius, that I almost got rear-ended, with people racing up behind me. You're gonna tell me that if there's a line there, when people are all aggravated, because they're waiting, trying to get around it, when they speed around to come faster, that's not gonna increase speed? So we're open to ideas, but we feel like things need to be addressed a little more. Three to four employees? Who is controlling where the vehicles are going? And who is respecting, you know, our use of that, you know, easement to our road? Now, I had a bunch of other stuff, but I just feel like it would be appreciated if we can review this a little bit deeper and actually get a copy of the plans and just see what we can do to see how we can be good neighbors and fair with everybody. I don't think that's, you know, a tough or a heavy ask, especially since it is definitely going to affect our neighborhood. And I have my list of, you know, the quality of life, the safety, the value of our homes, the environmental conditions, and those, the noise. We can get into all of that. But it's definitely the safety, it's definitely the sound, and it's definitely the cars coming in. And my main concern is that nobody here tonight addressed what happens to those cars pulling out right that do have to go westbound. Thank you.
Thank you. Name and address for the record?
Yes, Donna Soma, 33 Cutter Place, West Babylon. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. I'm here tonight to express my concerns and strong objection to allowing this car wash facility on Montauk Highway near Fleets Point Drive in West Babylon. I have resided at 33 Cutter Place, which is a dead-end roadway off Fleets Point Drive for over 20 years. And this is the first time that I am voicing a personal objection to a proposed project coming into the community. My main concern with allowing a car wash at this location is motor vehicle and pedestrian safety. Over the past few years, traffic flow and congestion on Montauk Highway has increased exponentially, and noticeably in that stretch of roadway between Great East Neck Road and Fleets Point Drive. There have been numerous traffic accidents, many of them resulting in injuries. They're right at the intersection of Montauk Highway and Fleets Point Drive. We see the police cars and ambulances come and go at that intersection. In addition, the addition of a car wash, which obviously would invite further vehicular traffic to an already very congested area and intersection, is the absolute wrong choice for this location in our community. First, the lot itself is too narrow and too small to accommodate the constant flow and overflow of cars that would be coming into and out of the car wash facility. Second, the patrons of the car wash will inevitably turn onto Fleets Point Drive in order to access Montauk Highway. A chain rope or one or two cars a day is not feasible. If you live down in that area, you'll see that that's constantly in use now, even without the car wash being present. This is really problematic, because customers of the very busy AutoZone store and the orthopedic and physical therapy center on Fleets Point Drive, they already do this, they use Fleets Point as a means to access Montauk Highway. So our once-quiet residential road of Fleets Point Drive has unfortunately already become too hectic and congested in the area of Montauk Highway. This project would exacerbate an already-existing traffic problem. In sum, the negative impact to my community far outweighs any positives of a car wash at this location. A car wash is not in appropriate use for this location. The project is not necessary, not wanted, or even needed. There is another car wash on Montauk Highway about a mile and a half west. For these reasons, I respectfully request that the board deny the special exception permit application. I thank the board for its time and kind consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hello, sorry for the workout you had.
It's all right.
Name and address for the record?
Craig Roberts, 79 Cutter Place. I have been--
Wait, do you affirm to tell the truth?
Yeah, I'm gonna tell the truth. I've been a resident of the town of Babylon for 45 years. I have lived in this house 43 years. I was here at the last meeting, I told yous. I've seen this place develop a lot. Sorry, I'm getting emotional, but I hate the change. We already have way too much traffic on that road, several fatalities and accidents happen a year in between Great East Neck Road and Little East Neck Road on that section of Montauk Highway. Adding a car wash is only gonna increase the traffic. Nonetheless, increase the stop traffic in the slow lane with people trying to get into that car wash. Regardless of what they say about how many cars are gonna be on that property, let's face facts. We all been to a Washville, we all been to splash car wash on Delaware and Montauk. The line's out onto the street, and we all know that. As far as that goes, it's just not, it's not something that we should be having in our neighborhood. Along with the fact that we have currently several cars that come into the neighborhood to make U-turns. We have the medical building, we have AutoZone, we have the Bristol, and Sunrise Assisted. My house personally backs up on to Sunrise Assisted Living and the medical building property. So there is no trees in the way, and I can hear everything clearly. So adding a car wash is gonna hinder my time in my backyard along with my three neighbors that border it also. Between the noise from the car wash, the vacuums, whatever would go on, the noise from the cars. Also, the garbage trucks. Right now, the garbage truck for Sunrise Assisted Living is 3:00 AM, and it does wake me up sometimes. So I don't know what time their garbage is gonna get picked up, but if it's gonna be in that timeframe, that's gonna be a little bit of an annoyance. I'm not sure what time AutoZone is, because I don't really see that one, and I don't hear it. I literally can hear the one at Sunrise, because it's literally on my, back of my property. As far as the employee and the manager that's gonna be at this facility, they have not enough employee parking at all for this property, with the employees that are gonna be there. So if you have one manager and three employees, that's four people, you have three spots, you don't have enough. And if they say there's gonna be a fourth person at that time, you need five now, and there's not enough. And then you also gotta do, deal with shift change. So if you have shift change, they're gonna overlap most likely, and now you're gonna have an additional three or four cars that are gonna have to park somewhere. And they're either gonna park behind AutoZone, where they're probably not allowed to park, because it's not their property, or they're gonna park in the vacuum spot, taking up the vacuum spots. So that needs to be addressed. I don't, the easement on AutoZone, I personally went and spoke to the store manager yesterday. I gave him, I let him know about this meeting, they told the district manager. I don't know what's gonna happen with that situation, but their 18-wheeler that comes there to drop parts is roughly three days a week. So that's gonna be an issue if they're letting cars through there, because that 18-wheeler comes in during normal business hours. As far as emergency vehicles, let's talk about that. Police, fire, EMS. If there's an accident, or if there is a situation at Bristol or Sunrise Assisted Living, and there is a line of cars in the slow lane trying to get into that car wash, how the hell are the emergency vehicles gonna get in? They ain't just gonna move. They don't move when you're sitting in traffic on the Sun State or Sunrise, or wherever. It's gonna be a rarity. That's something that needs to be looked into. That intersection, I've seen numerous accidents my whole life living there. I've been in one personally. It's horrible, that intersection. I even worked for New York State DOT at one time. I even tried to get them to put in a turning signal. And they said, "Oh, no, there's not enough traffic, you don't need it." What good was that? Didn't be no good. Pretty much that this really needs to be not permitted. It's not for this town. There is way too much commercial business right there, way too much traffic between cars, people, walking people, riding bikes. There's gonna be another accident. We literally had someone get killed on a motorcycle in July, right down the road. This is an ongoing problem. As far as people coming into neighborhood, I don't want people driving down into our block to make a U-turn that don't belong there. I've personally had my house broken into when I was younger. So have fellow neighbors. We don't need random people making U-turns and realizing there's a nice neighborhood here, where they're gonna come back at another time and do something. Whether it's steal a car, break into a house, or whatever the case may be. So as far as that goes, I really don't know what else to say, but I said what I had to say about this stuff. But, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, good evening, Janine Borst. I live at 30 Fleets Point Drive. I'm right on the block.
Do you affirm to tell the truth?
Yes. I actually grew up in the house. I was 13 when I moved in the house, so I've seen a lot of change. And I did hear about the blightedness of that spot, and it is. However, when we take a look at, and I'm not going to reiterate everything that's already been said, but the traffic in that area is awful. Just taking my grandchildren across the street, it's like taking our lives in our hands just to get across. And we all know, we've seen, nothing against Spark, it's a car wash. They're going to fill up and spill out onto Montauk Highway. I heard that there was 85% of the water that's recycled. What happens to the rest of it when there's a natural preserve right behind us? Was that studied?
We'll have them answer.
Okay, I wasn't, I didn't know if that was part of the study of the chemicals and leaching off into the natural preserve. Okay? Thank you.
Hi.
Okay, board. My name is Lee Barasoff. I live on 16 Cutter Place in the Landings there.
Do you affirm to tell the truth?
Yes. I agree with everything these people said, so I don't have to go over that. There's a few other things, and when everybody's presenting something, I heard a lot of, I think, "It shouldn't happen, it will be all right." How do you know? Were you there--
They're up to us.
Yeah. Were they there at Sandy, when there was a foot of water in the road right there? Is there, all this system's gonna work perfect? I don't know. Do they know? Everybody said it's gonna work, but it might not. Plus, they're dumping the stuff in the sewer system, which we don't need more water in the sewer system. 15%, or 25, no, 15%. The other thing is, everybody talked about coming out and making a right turn. I'll show you a school bus, when it's coming down the street, can't make that turn, because Fleet Point is only 32-foot wide. So half of it goes out this way, so you only got 15 feet to go out this, so you can't make two lanes. Making the turn, the center line is at 17 feet. Any truck over 20-foot, delivery trucks, fire trucks, ambulances, all the prime trucks, garbage trucks-- If everybody would watch a school bus go around there, they'd drive over the sidewalk. It's the only way unless they take half the lane going out, swing way wide, and if cars are lined up there, they can't get out. And then what about the 70 cars coming out every, on that side? They're not going to just go. I didn't see any other cars. They forget the traffic is there before them. So when those cars are trying to get out, you almost should have a light there if they wanted to go out because they're not going to make it. They're going to be sitting backed up. Now, when a school bus or something has to turn slow, what about all those cars are packing up? People aren't going to let them out. That road there, they run 60, 70 miles an hour sometime. You think they're going to stop for some car coming out from a car wash? No. You know what it is to drive nowadays. It's not the same. And I just, I agree with everything. I don't think the property's proper for it. You know, they, you had to move it over. What's the difference, what's the width difference from AutoZone and that building? Was it 10 feet, 12 feet? Is it legal? No, you had to give them a variance. The building's not that pretty. I don't think it's pretty. And the neighborhood, you let 50, 60 cars an hour idle, you don't think that's going to affect the carbon monoxide in the area? It's a lot of cars for 12 hours. Add them all up, and all those cars and the old age homes next door, those people, is that going to make them healthier? Is it going to be a healthier neighborhood? It's going to destroy that neighborhood. And like everybody else said, people will be in our neighborhood, and when they're in our neighborhood, there's trouble. So I think it should be squashed, but thank you.
Thank you. [applause] Would anyone else like to be heard on this application? For the record, there are none. Oh, wait, someone's coming. Someone's coming, someone's coming.
Good evening. My name is Roman Bedes. I live 83 Cutter Place.
You affirm to tell the truth?
Yes. So we talk a lot. I'm agreed with all of my neighbors about the congestion. So we're talking about 36 cars capacity at one hour there, wherever. So 2 minutes and 30 seconds per car to wash. So when it's coming out to the west of the Montauk Highway, I was there last night. I measured it. So we have 59 feet from the lights to the entrance to AutoZone. You can fit only three car there. So you will leave empty space there. So wherever the customers of the AutoZone can pull out, you have a space for another car. Where are all that car supposed to go?
Here, here, here. You have to talk to us.
Yeah. So where is that car supposed to go when they exiting that car wash? Every two and a half minutes, car is coming out. You have a lights there. You have all the traffic on the Montauk Highway, so it's just no space in there to pull out of that car wash. So the soundproof, plastic fence, like my neighbor Anthony says, it's not the soundproof. If you want the nice soundproof, you need to have a wood fence or concrete fence at least 20-foot high. Otherwise, it's not going to work. All the bushes, if it's two-foot bush, it's not going to absorb any of the carbon monoxide of the cars, and it's not going to absorb any noise. You need to put tall trees over there to absorb all the noise there. So all concern is the traffic and the accidents. So the people, they all entrance to the car wash, they want to go west, they're going to make a U-turn on the Fleet's Point, or they will try to get from the car wash right into the left lane to make to the shopping center, to make a U-turn. And like everybody here who lives in West Babylon, you remember the last accident on July 1st, when 17-years-old kid was killed on the motorcycle because somebody was trying to jump out of the side street. As we add more cars into it, to this neighborhoods, we're going to get more car accidents. And we have exactly the same car wash, one mile up, splash car wash, is doing the same. It's automatically, it's exactly the same, so I don't think we need another one two mile apart. It's having another property up the block where it was Apple Bank, big property. You have a lights for the entrance, easy entrance, easy go. You can purchase that. You have a property on 109 Friendies, huge property, commercial, no neighbors, you can do that. Down the block on the 109, it's another property, bank, no neighbors, commercial zone, you can do wherever you want over there. But the car wash, it's not for this neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Salerno, 12 Cutter Place.
You affirm to tell the truth?
Yes. So just to reiterate the traffic problems, not to go through what everybody already said, but currently, when you're on Montauk Highway, heading east, and you approach that light, you get backed up past the car wash, the proposed car wash. So you're already backed up there. Now, picture state-of-the-art car wash. People want to come in. You have lanes. That lane will now get taken over by folks trying to get into the car wash. While that's happening, people are trying to get out of the car wash. So anyone that lives in that area will not be able to access that right lane. You won't be able to make that right turn onto Fleet's to get home. So that's a big issue right there. The winter conditions, they'll have a heated apron, which is great, great accommodation, that does not account for any water that can then get to the road. They won't be able to heat the road. They will be able to heat the apron, and that'll look nice. The road will freeze, along with any chemical residue that may be on the vehicles when they leave the site. You cannot get all of the chemical residues out of the undercarriage of the cars. So that will definitely become very oily on the road and will create another hazard. So, and then the third thing is people will definitely make that right turn to make the U-turn onto Fleet's to get back to go west. There's no accommodation to go west. So with all of those, I strongly oppose this as well, but without repeating what everybody else said, I wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thank you. [applause] Would anyone else like to be heard on this application? For the record, there are none.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just before I call some of the experts up, just as far as outline is concerned, I'd like to call Mr. Raiches to come up and talk about the fact that the business model's not based on, on the weather. And Mr. Tortorella is going to come up, and he's going to address the traffic issues. And then Mr. Holloman, who's going to address some of the site-specific issues. So just before I do that, you want to go first? Just to address some of the overarching issues that were raised by the residents. Number one, business competition, as this board is very well aware and as your counsel knows full well, New York's courts recognize the fact that the fear of increased business competition cannot be used as a basis to challenge the zoning application. The case is Sunbright Car Wash, ironically, versus Board of Zoning Appeals at a town in North Hempstead, the site's 60 NY 2D 406, 1987 case, as well as Tappan Cleaners versus ZBA of the Village of Irvington, 57 AD 3D 683. That's a second department case from 2008. With regard to the special permit application, which the board is hearing tonight, New York State law is very clear. A special permit is quote tantamount to a legislative finding that if the special permit conditions are met, such a use will not adversely affect the neighborhood. That's the Court of Appeals case of North Shore Steakhouse versus the Village of Thomaston. That's a 1972 case. And finally, a special permit, just for the edification of the board and the members of the public that may not be aware, a special permit is dissimilar to a variance since it does not involve varying the restrictions of the zoning ordinance. Instead, the issuance of a special use permit is a duty imposed upon a board to be granted when all of the standards for the issuance are met. That is Hampton's LLC versus Rickembach, 98 AD 3D 736, a second department case from In addition, in your file with the planning department is the report from IMEG, which is the town's outside traffic consultant, dated April 22nd, 2025, and I quoted that in my overture, so I don't need to rehash that. And then finally, there was, someone mentioned a fact about notice. As the board is very well aware, the town planning staff takes care of mailing all notices to residents within the radius, and we take care of the posting of the signage on the site, which I have in my hand, a email from Matthew Ingber, who is my partner here, dated September 23rd, at 2:19 PM. He sent it into the town planning staff, along with an affidavit of posting and the signs that show that the site was adequately posted in compliance with the town code. Many, I couldn't help but appreciate the fact that many of the issues that were raised here tonight were also raised at the planning board and are really more site-related issues. And as you heard, the planning board did approve this application, with specifically with regard to the easement behind the advanced auto. We are the beneficiaries of the easement. And what that means in legal terms, for those who don't know, is that if someone, just because it's on their property, doesn't mean they can use it. It means that the benefit is held by the easement holder, which happens to be our property. So the parking of a tractor-trailer there, you know, it's 25-foot wide easement in and of itself, and as you heard the testimony of Mr. Raiches, it's very rarely used. I mean, it's just a bailout in, for that one, maybe two cars that, that needs to utilize it while in operation. Planning Board also issued a secret NAG deck back when they heard this, this application. And with that, I'm going to ask Mr. Raiches to talk about some of the operational questions that were raised by the public. Orr?
Thank you.
Thank you, Keith, and obviously appreciate all the comments from, from the public and the neighbors from behind the, the site. As far as weather and the actual usage of the site, because of the primary means of membership, most of our customers come when it is most convenient for them. It's not something that, when you go to a full-service wash, you'll typically be, it's more of an event, it's more expensive, and you'll typically do that before some special time, and again, usually on, on the weekend, going out to a restaurant, whatever. Our washes are meant to be used by our members as frequently as they would like, and it is more of a restorative wash back to the condition of the car prior to getting dirty as opposed to a full detail-type wash. That lends itself to the usage being more spread out throughout the day. We do have usage data from our existing washes that show that we do know those peak hours are between 1:00 and 3:00. And Mr. Tortorella discussed our usage during those peak hours. So we're not trying to hold anything back from the board. We do, we do design the sites and engineer them in order to accommodate the peak hours plus some more. So really, that is one thing we want to talk about. Then the weather being also a factor, we are open during weather events. Like I said, rain, or if it's just not a beautiful day, we are still open. We do still have people who use the wash, so it's not that it's, everybody's waiting for that one moment to go wash their cars. Obviously, we know that there are times that there are more peak, and that, and that's what we account for. As far as the manager plus employees topic, the manager is one of the three employees on the site, so that's why the three vehicles are, three vehicle spots are appropriate. Shift change happen, but they don't happen all at once, so one employee leaves, another one arrives, and that's well-managed on our existing sites today. Lastly, if we do anticipate higher-than-average usage, like I said, after a snowstorm, we'll actually pay for our employees to take Ubers or Lyft rides to work so as to avoid any additional vehicles on the site entirely. So that is something that our company does. We're very proactive in communicating with our employees about those topics. So I just wanted to touch on a few of those items. And the last thing was around the, the rinse of the vehicle. Again, we said the, the soaps are all biodegradable. It's no different than, than Dawn dish soap. Again, most of it does end up in the reclaim or in the trough, but the final rinse on the vehicle is a very important part of the wash process, and that's because if you left the tunnel and we didn't do a proper final rinse and also the blow-off using the dryers, there would be spots left on the vehicle. That would not be good for us, not be good for our business, and certainly not good for membership. So that, we have just as much of an incentive to keep those soaps off the vehicle as, as anybody else, but thank you.
Where you go?
Yes, sir.
So I don't know if you can answer this, but garbage pickup times?
So garbage pickup is contracted once we get ready to open a site, but we can certainly work with the hours of, that would be prescribed by the board. Again, different from a assisted living facility, we don't generate medical waste. We don't generate a lot of waste because there's really not much activity happening on the site from people. There's obviously people who have some trash receipts, things in their cars, but all of that is, is kept into those dumpsters, so we don't need multiple pickups per week. We can definitely work with a schedule that would be during business hours or during the non, during the, the business hours from a sound, sound perspective, the 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM timeframe.
So you'll have no objections to our setting hours?
No.
Okay. And the other, there was a woman, I, I don't know if you can answer this, but the other 15% of the water, do you know what happens to it or where it goes? We're going to have, Mr. Holloman is going to cover that next.
Yeah, so our, our engineer is, I consider myself a reclaim enthusiast, but not an expert. He's, he's an expert on that and can talk to what happens to the, to that water. But know that we do buy the best and the, the most expensive equipment for reclaim because that is a big part of what we do in terms of as a company from an environmental stewardship, stewardship standpoint.
Just a question.
Yes.
I don't know if you answered as well. The heated apron, when they leave, does that area have any drainage? So when it does, all that water is accumulated, does, does it go somewhere?
Yeah, there, there is, there is drainage there.
So it wouldn't go out to, into the street onto Montauk Highway?
Not from the, from the apron itself, no.
Okay.
We'll defer to Mr. Holloman for the rest of that.
Any, any, before I sit down. Okay, thank you, your man.
Thank you.
Yes. Alex Holloman here to speak on some of the aspects that were, concerns that were raised by the public in regards to the onsite reclaim system, application of water and kitchen-grade detergents, various drainage items and such. So our application, which is in its final approval, as I mentioned before, is in final, it has received approval from Suffolk County Water, but we have submitted to the Suffolk County Department of Health Services Waste Water Management, Suffolk County Department of Public Works Sewer Authority, and the Suffolk County Office of Pollution Control, which are all required submissions, and they're in their final approval. These agencies do a strict review of plumbing systems, mechanical systems, and apparatus that we've talked about here this evening, and their mandate is to apply strict standards related to public health and environmental health. So these things have been reviewed, they're in their final approval stages, and approval is anticipated as imminent. To speak more on these systems from just a business and cleanliness standpoint, as Orr had mentioned before, in order for the car wash to operate effectively as a business, it needs to be clean inside, outside of the car wash tunnel, it needs to produce a clean car. So the idea that there is a, this is a new bill. This is the brand-new technology in regards to application of water through the wash tunnel, applications of these food-grade detergents, and then when the car is leaving, it is dry, it is clean, it is not spilling water everywhere, and it is a system that, as I've said before, has that central trench area that collects 85% of the water. To speak on the So, the idea that there is a, this is a new bill, this is the brand-new technology in regards to application of water through the wash tunnel, applications of these food-grade detergents, and then when the car is leaving, it is dry, it is clean, it is not spilling water everywhere, and it is a system that, as I've said before, has that central trench area that collects 85% of the water. To speak on the 15% that is not collected or not directly reused, this area has a previously-built, an existing sewer system, which we will be tying into that sewer system. The reason for the submissions and approvals, as I mentioned before, Suffolk County Waste Water Management, Suffolk County DPW Sewer Authority, and Suffolk County Office of Pollution Control, is that these, that's a very regulated discharge. They have reviewed, they are fine with this situation, and they are essentially very pleased with the reclaim system we're proposing here. To speak on the heated aprons and water potentially leaving the site, it is a town requirement that all water stay in sight in regards to stormwater. There is drainage provided in the turn as you leave the tunnel, it is curbed, it is not intended to go into the right-of-way, it is designed not to go into the right-of-way. And for all these aspects, we feel that our application has provided an efficient way of cleaning the cars without providing any negative environmental impact.
Last, Dick Tortorella to cover the traffic issues.
Save the best for last. So, just to touch on a few of the specific items, I'm just gonna go kind of one by one as they were written out, but the way I'd like to start is, none of what I said in my presentation is based on just my opinion, because I felt like thinking it for this application. You know, we've prepared extensive analyses based on data published in industry-standard engineering sources, observations at existing Spark facilities, and experience that I have, frankly, working on hundreds of development applications that generate traffic similar to or higher than this. So, just starting off with the trip generation itself, IT, or the Institute of Transportation Engineers, is considered, for lack of a better term, like the holy grail of traffic engineers. It establishes the bounds for which development projects of all kinds generate traffic. This use that we cited for the proposed Spark car wash is specifically for an express car wash. There is a separate use for a hand car wash. Those data points are taken from existing sites and surveyed at peak times, when weather was poor in the previous five days. It is based on a fitted curve of hundreds of study sites, taken at the times when these facilities generate the most trips. Again, we're talking about, we're just, I'm just gonna use the one single hour, the Saturday peak hour is 145 total trips into and out of the site, based on that data published by IT. That takes no credit for what we would refer to as a pass-by trip. So, for instance, someone on Saturday going out to get groceries, they're a member at the Spark car wash, they decide on their way to the grocery store, let me go into the car wash, I'll get my car washed, I'll continue on my pre-existing trip to the grocery store. IT estimates that for automated car washes, up to 40% of their peak hour trips are comprised of pass-by traffic. So, you would take that 145 total trips in an hour, reduce that by 40%, and that's actually the volume of new traffic to the study area. Even if you were to use the 145 total with no pass-by credit, we're talking about one new trip to this general short segment of Montauk Highway every minute, every 55 seconds. It's not a constant stream of traffic in and out, like has been mentioned this evening. You're looking at it on a total hour basis, again, based on that data published by IT. In terms of the queue and vacuum space demand, all of that information, the average turnover rate for the vacuums, the average processing capacity of those paystation gates, that's based on observations that we've taken from existing Spark facilities. It's not from a Splash, it's not from another express car wash operator, which I'm sure they have great technology, I'm just not that familiar with it. It is from operational Spark sites. Even the vacuum demand, seven minutes on average, that is based on the existing Spark sites. We've observed at other high-volume Spark facilities that are on the border of state and county roadways that carry total daily traffic volumes, that's almost double what's on Montauk Highway in front of this site. The max queues in the non-member lane, it's typically three to four vehicles at one time. The max queue in the member lane, where they're almost seamlessly processed through it, is typically two vehicles. So, again, we just don't expect that the queuing at the paystation would have any significant potential to extend all the way through the vacuum area and back onto Montauk Highway, which would be a very undesirable situation for the Spark team as well. That's not something that the operator wants to do. I think it's a valid concern, I think it's just something we thought about very closely and have used the data to conduct an analysis to prove that it's extremely unlikely that will happen. In terms of being able to make a right turn out of the curb cut onto Montauk Highway, we have studied the intersection between Montauk Highway and Fleets Point Drive, and the traffic model that we prepared did show that the 95th percentile queue in the eastbound direction extends past where our proposed curb cut is. But again, we're talking about 95th percentile queuing, meaning that in the one highest peak hour that we study, only 5% of that hour is the queue actually reaching that length. When you look at a signalized corridor with signals up and downstream of a curb cut, that's where unsignalized accesses are most efficient, because the location of those signals with the stop-start create gaps in the traffic stream that allow people to enter from an unsignalized driveway. If you look at the signal between Montauk Highway and Fleets Point Drive, it's a 90-second cycle. The eastbound phase is active for 70 of those 90 seconds. So, that means that that queuing condition is, only has the potential really to happen while the Fleets Point Drive phase is active. Again, 20 out of the 90 seconds, every cycle, every hour. So, again, in our opinion, we feel that that design and that the placement of our driveway with respect to that signal is efficient in allowing people to exit the site. And even in the case where someone is trying to exit the site while the signal is red, we've provided space between the street and the wash tunnel exit for a few cars to queue, so that there is room, and it will not disrupt the wash tunnel operations until the light turns green and people can then make the turning maneuver, excuse me, onto Montauk Highway. And the last point I'll make with that is, we also modeled the intersection of our site access with Montauk Highway, and the projected queue is at a maximum, or excuse me, the projected delay is at a maximum of about 10 seconds, just for context there. And the last thing is with the cross-access to Fleets Point Drive. As, you know, we've heard from a lot of residents, I would also have a concern with that being the sole entrance and exit to my community for a large stream of vehicles to exit onto that private roadway. Again, that driveway is not an operational driveway for the site, it will be restricted by a chain-link fence that will only be opened by the Spark employee that operates the kiosk when needed, when someone needs to bail out of the queue. Really, if you think about it, it doesn't make a lot of sense for someone to even exit at that location, because it's before the wash tunnel. So, if you went through the wash tunnel, you'd have to go through the paystation again to even have the opportunity to exit in that location. But regardless, it is still not a designed exit for this site, and having one garbage truck a week and emergency vehicles as needed use that, in my opinion, this is my opinion, I don't view that as an overburdening to a minor-street approach to Montauk Highway.
Okay, thank you. I do have a question, I don't know, I didn't hear you address this. The concerns about the customers that are interested in going westbound.
So, there are numerous opportunities to make left turns from Montauk Highway onto public roads to then make a U-turn maneuver. The first one that I see would be Beechwood Drive. You make the left turn at Beechwood Drive, and then there's a segment of West Main Street that runs parallel to Montauk Highway, a very easy U-turn maneuver to make, especially when considering that it's an unsignalized maneuver. So, as soon as you approach the intersection again with Montauk Highway, you can just make the right turn as soon as there's a gap in the traffic stream, you don't need to wait for a traffic signal.
Okay, that's an option. And as far as the easement, so currently, AutoZone does or does not use that easement, or do we know?
What was it?
Use it in what, in what respect?
In the rear of AutoZone, that's your, you guys own.
As for access to our property?
No.
Yeah.
Are they using it, is there any agreement that they can use it? What's going on with that easement?
Testimony was that they use it, but the tractor trailer, it's on, so it's 25 feet wide.
Yeah, I'm being told, as we've heard before, that it's used to park a tractor-trailer for deliveries.
Is that an agreeant, is that an agreement with you guys or not? That's what I'm really interested in.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Is that an agreement that you guys have in place currently?
Yes, the easement runs with the land, it's been an easement that's been in place, it's recorded in the county clerk's office.
So, AutoZone is using that for tractor-trailers currently?
Right.
Okay, because one of the concerns is, I was thinking maybe that we could be able to set in place as making that an exit-only, because you guys are using it for exit, but obviously that's not gonna work if you guys are allowing AutoZone to use that.
Yeah, are they aware, yeah, are they aware of this? The reason might change?
Right, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah, I mean, you wanna cover it? I said, I mean, it's 25 feet wide, the average tractor-trailer is eight and a half feet wide, you know, so there's ample room for that, that, you know, bailout vehicle, as perchance that it needs to use it.
Okay.
You know, I mean, I don't know how many times it's gonna happen where there's a tractor-trailer there and a car needs to get out, but there should be ample room for both to coexist.
Okay. And another question I have, the chain-link fence, is that our, is that the ideal situation to have there?
Yeah, it's just a chain, not a chain-link fence.
Just a chain.
Yeah.
Chain-link fence is what I, like the little droopy thing?
A chain.
A chain.
Just to prevent the vehicles from going through there, to discourage them.
Okay, not the best discouragement, but I understand, I guess. And the exit on Fleets Point, could we, have we considered making that a left-only turn? Does that make sense? Would that make sense for?
Yeah, we, that property is not before the board, we don't control it, so in terms of, I mean, operationally, it doesn't serve any purpose for vehicles to go out to the right, but, you know, we have no control over that, and it's not properly before the town.
Okay, PVC fencing, that was a concern. Do you guys want to address anything regarding that? That was a concern about noise, any type of other fencing that we may be able to substitute?
Sure, I'm gonna have Jack come up and address that.
Sure, so that's kind of two components of, I'm not sure which one was questioned. So, the canopy structures that we're designing here are made from PVC, but the interior of them are perforated and they're sound-absorbing, so they're slotted, sound gets in there, it gets absorbed. The tunnel enclosure would be also faced internally with sound-absorbing material. So, while the PVC, yes, is reflective, we're treating the inside of it, it's enclosed with sound-absorbing material. The vinyl fences on the perimeter are currently vinyl. Wood fences aren't really that much absorptive than vinyl. If you want to think in percentages, vinyl fence might be 2% absorptive, and of wood might be 5% absorptive compared to the stuff in the tunnel that we're doing, which is more like 70, 75% absorptive. The decision as to what those perimeter fences are is really a client decision, it'll have maintenance implications if it's wood versus PVC, but from an acoustic reflection standpoint, they're more or less the same in my world.
Thank you.
Yeah, and at the heights, especially for the vinyl fences on the sides, they're at six feet, so they're providing some reduction, but we're not relying on that. The bulk of the work is happening in those canopies and through the selections of low-noise equipment. That's what's really doing the bulk of the noise-control work on the site.
Right, thank you. The shrubbery around, they, there was some concern, are these arboridies, are the, what height are these? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, guys, we're like playing duck that's here.
So, in combination with the fencing, there's the, the proposed vegetation on the south side is meant to both provide acoustical deadening and also shrouding, so it's, it's ground cover, it's also arboridie style, it's, yeah, pencil-based, columnar-style high plantings.
Perfect, thank you.
Yes.
All right.
With that, as long as the board doesn't have any more questions, you know, in addition to the three signed concessions aforementioned, the signed 6A removal at the entrance of the tunnel, sign one, removing the logo from the east elevation wall sign, and finally, sign five, removing the logo from the pole ID sign, we're happy to submit to the town planning department revised elevations depicting that. We agree with Mr. Shepherd's suggestion of two conditions of approval. One, for hours of garbage pickup to be covenanted, as well as hours of operation from 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And we respectfully submit, in summary, that the subject application should be granted for the following reasons. One, as testified by the project experts this evening, the single-area variance and sign variances will not have a negative impact on the surrounding properties or change the character of the area. Further, the car wash will not have a negative impact on existing traffic additions or onsite parking, as testified, and the development will have no adverse impact on adjacent property values or reasonable use of adjacent parcels. The development will bring construction jobs, as well as full-time jobs, as well as increase the tax ratables for the property. And finally, the use of the property will comply with the town's ordinances and to issue a special use permit. Do you have anything else? So, my client's telling me that they would concede putting a no-right turn on their property before the bailout lane, so kind of in the southeast corner, yeah, right about, nope, other side, yes, right there. So, we would concede that as well, to make that a condition of approval, that would be fine.
Okay.
So, as such, we respectfully submit the board, grant the application, as far as the special exception or variance criteria have been satisfied. On behalf of my client, thank you for your time, I know it's late, thank you.
Thank you. We are going to reserve, leave the record open, and...
For written submission.
I guess we can call it for the first and then, okay, let's leave the record open for both applications, and you guys will get this decision in the mail.
So, as far as the public portion is closed? Yes?
Yes, we close the hearing, that is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, he's gonna, he's gonna be open, yeah.
And if there's anything submitted, we would have an opportunity to respond?
Of course.
Okay, great.
All right, thank you all for coming down.
Thank you so much.
We will consider.
Thank you for your patience, have a good night.
Thank you, guys.
[inaudible]
Realty Corp., in Lindenhurst. Name and address for the record?
Colgarth Mayor, from Long Island Perfect Permits, 124 Front Street, Suite 205, Massapequa Park, New York, 11762.
Do you affirm to tell the truth?
I do.
There you go. All right, so, I have a planning division memo dated September 17, 2025, an environmental control memo dated September 24, 2025, we'll need a negative declaration. A Suffolk County memo dated September 23, 2025, a decision of local determination. A fire marshal memo dated September 25, 2025, did you see that, did you get that fire marshal report?
I don't believe so, no.
There are some things there that you need to address. A survey by Harold Bush, I'm guessing, I don't have a date here, and a tax map acting as an area map.
Madam Chair, there's six photographs, seven photographs and a site plan by Joseph Ambello, dated June 2, 2025.
All right, what would you like to tell us?
So, the previous owners of the property were before the board in 2020, case number 20-007, and received approval to operate a public garage for Autobody and Auto Glass Repair Shop, that was Supreme Auto Collision. So, Supreme Auto Collision had closed, and my client took over the space in March of 2025, and opened up North Star Autobody. They operate four Autobody shops in Nassau County, this would be their first venturing into Suffolk. Part of their business is... Part of their business is they work to get on the tow lists. It was at that point of submitting an application for the tow list that they were notified that they needed to essentially renew their special exemption permit. And at that point, that was really when they were made aware that there was an issue with that. So they had immediately reached out to us and worked to getting to where we are now. So that was, I believe there was some correspondence requesting reason for the lapse in that approval. That is essentially why the business had changed hands and it was really just once. Unfortunately, at the time that the business was changed, our clients were not notified by the pre-existing business owner that this was something that needed to be maintained. So I believe you guys also had some questions regarding the, any alterations to the building. There have been no alterations. The only thing that was done was they had painted the outside. They do have an application for some additional signs, but as of right now, any signage on the building and property is permitted under the Town of Babylon. So no, no other alteration has been made other than painting. Believe current operating hours are Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And the, think that concludes it. If the board has any questions, be happy to answer.
Thank you, I'll turn the hearing over to Mr. Rigby.
How are you?
Doing well, how are you?
Good, a few things, new ownership, right?
Correct.
Site plan, are you guys following the same site plan as per previous owners? Or did the site plan change, does that have, the storage?
No, to my knowledge, everything's going to follow the pre-existing setup. The only difference is, with the businesses is essentially just, they also have an element where they work with the, you know, being on a tow list. That's really the only difference, everything should be the same.
I drove past personally today, there's cars along the sidewalk area, parked in the parking lot. Is that employee parking? I also noticed that behind the fence, there's cars that are in disrepair. Do those come in at night, do they stay outside?
So I'm gonna have my client step up just to provide a little bit more context to maybe some of those vehicles and as far as the cars behind the fencing, what, what type of volume or what we're seeing with that? And just your name and address for the record.
Hi, how you doing? Anthony Giganti, 137 Monroe Boulevard, Valley Stream, New York, 10581.
Do you affirm to tell the truth?
Yes, so majority of the vehicles that you see parked along the front of the building are employee vehicles. The ones that you see in the back lined up are customers', customers' vehicles that get locked up at night.
So do those stay outside at night or do those all come in?
They stay outside in the back.
The lapse was because of new ownership, that ain't gonna happen again, right?
No.
I'm being told that there's car washing and detailing going on at this site, is that accurate?
No, so there's no detailing at the site. Occasionally, with regular business operations, the cars are rinsed off, but it's not in any official cleaning or detailing capacity. They do, there is a car wash, from my understanding, within close proximity, that that is really what they utilize for any official washing or, or, you know, anything relative to like detailing.
In that nature, we need a permit.
Understood.
Contact New York State County and town for their approval if that was to happen on this site.
Understood.
Like I said, there is a number, I think there's three items for the fire marshal to have to be addressed prior to us moving this application. So once that's addressed, the fire marshal will have to reach back to his own office for us to make our decision to move this application.
Okay, and we would address those directly with the fire marshal then, and then, okay, understood.
Would you agree to the previous imposed CNRs to this site?
Did you guys get it? Let me just confer with them. Yeah, it's just some concerns they have to.
Yeah, we, I agree to the covenants and restrictions.
So our client agrees and again, they already impose on the property.
So just before I close my statement here, if you plan on putting vehicles outside behind the fence, I'm sure you probably have to look into a permit for outside storage. Just heads up, so try and get anything inside, try not to keep anything outside this time unless you plan on filing for a permit for outside storage.
Okay.
So it's been a, it's been an Autobody shop for 30 years.
We would need your name and address.
It's Ricky, Ricky Valenti, 161 Secatog Lane West in West Islip.
You affirm to tell the truth?
I own property.
Do you affirm to tell the truth?
Yes.
Okay, good.
So it's been established Autobody shop for 30 years and I know the shop well. It's been parking cars outside for years. Is it possible that it's permitted already in place? How's that work? It's always, he's always had cars outside, this prior collision shop owner.
So the site plan that's submitted is showing five parking spaces in the rear yard. It's not labeled as outdoor storage. If you wanted to pursue that, you would have to label that for outdoor storage and adjust the parking calculation. So as long as it met everything, it would be allowed, but it has to be shown.
Okay, if they, we will file appropriate designations and everything like that, should they intend to continue to use that for any outdoor vehicle storage or anything of that nature.
I just want to say I'm off to a good start, not having any problems.
Understood, be good neighbors, right?
I think you heard it, I heard it from Mr. Shepherd earlier. That's all I got to say.
Any other questions from the board? Would anyone like to be heard on this application? For the record, there are none. All right, so we're gonna close the hearing. We're gonna reserve decision and leave the record open for you guys to get the fire marshal.
Thank you, hope that was short and sweet, thank you, take care.
You guys picked a good night.
All right. Next application is application 25-158, Capo Truck Equipment Corporation in West Babylon. Hi, name and address for the record?
William Germano, attorney with Germano and Cahill, 4250 Veterans Highway, Holbrook, New York. Good evening.
Good evening, all right. So we have a planning division memo dated September 17, 2025. Environmental control memo dated September 24, 2025. This app will need a negative declaration. Fire marshal report dated September 25, 2025. Do you have a copy of that?
Do not.
Do not. Survey, Secafico Land Surveying dated November 14, 2023. Tax map acting as an area map and?
Madam Chair, there's four photographs and there's a site plan by German and Clemens Architect dated July 23, 2024.
What would you like to let us know?
Okay, I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Cuda Realty LLC, and the property user, Capo Truck Equipment Inc. Frank Capo, who is here this evening, is the principal of the business. Also present is James German, the project architect and engineer. This property is located at 65 Edison in West Babylon. It's approximately 1.1 acres in size and a rectangular shape on the, in its corner lot. And it's operated as a public garage since 1972, when the original certificate of occupancy was issued, which explicitly identifies the permitted use as public garage. Unfortunately, in August of 2023, a severe storm caused a catastrophic damage and the building was deemed a total loss. That event has brought us here tonight with a proposal not only to rebuild, but to improve the facility for the continued use by Capo Trucking. Capo is a, Capo is a family-founded, locally-based business that has been serving Long Island's commercial vehicle community since 1993. They are not a retail auto shop, rather they provide business-to-business commercial truck repair, fleet services, parts and sales. Their customer base consists of other businesses who depend on commercial vehicles for their operations. They also do sales of new, pre-owned and new commercial vehicles. The new facility will expand modestly from 8,500 square feet to just under 11,800 square feet and will include dry basement storage, offices on a partial second floor and seven repair bays. A daily staffing is expected to be approximately 11 employees, which would include seven technicians and four office and sales staff. As part of this application, we are respectfully requesting a special permit for the continued operation of a public garage, variances for front yard parking on Edison Avenue and Mahan Street, approval for the outdoor night storage of commercial vehicles and a parking relaxation of approximately 21% from 38 stalls required to 30 provided. The site is located in the heart of the industrial district and is buffered by similar uses like Penske Trucking to the north and west, a bus depot just further north, both of which have outdoor storage of vehicles. There's also a solar farm on the opposite side of Edison Avenue for the residentially zoned property owned by the cemetery. The closest residential home is approximately 1,200 feet to the west. We believe the proposed plan respects the town code and allows site safety by separating customer parking from the truck service yard and allows a longstanding local business to reinvest in the community. The planning board heard the application 10 days ago, reserved decision, however, there was no opposition from the public. With respect to the site plan itself, there are two existing driveways on Edison Avenue and one on Mahan Street. Those are not changing. There's an interior lot that would contain 18 parking stalls and 11 larger stalls for the outdoor storage of the trucks that will be either waiting repair or for the, for the sale of those trucks. This interior lot will be fenced and gated. There's one southern gate facing Edison and another eastern gate facing Mahan. And during the day, the, the gate facing Mahan is actually closed, but there's about a three-foot gap for the staff that parks in those stalls to enter the building. The front of the building where the, will be along Edison, where the, there are eight parking stalls outside of that southern gate, four of which are located in the front yard. The side of the building on Mahan, also deemed a front yard, is where there are another four parking stalls outside of that gate. The design benefit here is that the fenced storage and interior lot provides site safety and separates the trucking operations from customer parking, so that the customers are not walking through an active service yard. Again, it is anticipated, based on the prior use of the site, for this exact use, that the customers will park on Edison to enter the building. Also, we are seeking the, a 21% parking relaxation, which in and of itself is not necessarily substantial, but I'll draw the board to a couple of points. The outdoor storage consists of 11 large truck stalls, which the total area is approximately 3,600 square feet. So per the code, the outdoor storage of the trucks requires an additional 5.2 parking stalls. This raises the parking stall requirement from 33 to 38 stalls, which brings the relaxation request over 20%. But I'd like the board to recognize that these storage stalls are used for the storage of vehicles that are going to be brought inside or be sold. So it's not as if there's going to be, it's going to bring in additional staff to work in that storage yard. A technician would go out, bring the vehicle into the inside, or a salesperson would go out and get the vehicle. So it's not, it's not going to demand more onsite parking for staff. That's why I mentioned that we anticipate this site to have approximately 11 employees at a given time. There is sufficient parking. The property has historically operated as a public garage since at least 1972, per the certificate of occupancy. The request for parking relief is reasonable and consistent with the actual staffing and customer needs and the outdoor night truck storage is integral to operations and does not create extra parking demand. Generally speaking, the relief being requested is practical, consistent with its historical use and protective of public safety and site function. Based on the foregone, we respectfully request that the board approve the application for the requested variances, as well as the special permit. It's our additional request that, given the long and continuous historical use of the property as a permitted public garage for at least 53 years, the board not impose any durational limit on the special permit. The use has been established, it's consistent with the character of the surrounding district and it's integral to the operations of this family-owned business. We are only here today because of a fluke weather event that destroyed my client's building and nobody else is in the neighborhood and it's disturbed his operations for going on three years now. That concludes my initial remarks. So if anybody has any technical questions about the building or the site, Mr. German is here to assist with that. And if anybody has any questions for Mr. Capobianco about the operations, he's also ready to, he's prepared to talk about it, thank you.
Thank you, I'll turn the hearing over to Mr. Shepherd.
How are you?
Doing well, thank you.
So you have, you're, we're getting 11 trucks outside and seven bays, that the total?
Yes.
There'll be 18 trucks inside the property?
That's correct.
I drove by there yesterday. All the trucks that were outlined out on the street, were they waiting to be serviced? Was that part of yours or?
The trucks that are currently sitting outside the gates are actually the neighbor's trucks.
Home Depot?
Penske, they're taking advantage of the fact that we're not operating out of the site.
Home Depot trucks and all?
Okay, why doesn't, Mr. Capobianco?
Hi, my name is Frank Capobianco, 1971 Lakeland Avenue in Ronkonkoma.
Do you affirm to tell the truth?
Yes, I do. Currently, because of the situation at 65 Edison, if you look at 21 Lamar Street on the map, Penske is allowing us to use that facility temporarily, just to sell parts. We don't have a permit to operate, to do repairs. So what we're doing is we're allowing them, as an exchange for them to let us in that building, we're allowing them to park trucks on hours. The rent has been significantly reduced to allow us to be there as temporary.
You agree to the subject standard, can covenants and restrictions with public garage?
We haven't had an opportunity to review them, but I'm familiar with the town's standard covenants and we do, provided that we can sell the new and used commercial vehicles. However, I will point out that one of the items in the planning board covenants was no outside repair, which we don't dispute, we're not, we don't do outside repair. However, there is a specific emissions test that requires the vehicle to idle outside for a few minutes. And that is a, a, an exception that we've requested the planning staff to consider.
I think state law would circumvent. Would that be correct? Sorry?
But it's one of the covenants for, it's number one, no repair work shall be performed afterwards at any time.
I think it would be helpful for Mr. Capobianco to address that.
I can address that. It's part of a regeneration process when cleaning the exhaust system, which is required, and we cannot do that operation indoors. Okay?
Duly noted. And?
Just a quick question, are you buying and selling car, I mean trucks? Did you say that earlier or no?
Yes, yes, we, we buy, we buy, we sell trucks, we repair trucks, and we have to sell parts for trucks. That's what it's, it was when we bought it. It's always done that.
It's not part of your application though. Not part of your application though?
Not now. Well, it'd be part of.
There's no request for the sale of vehicles part of the application?
Well, it was an important part of the business, so in light of that, we'd respectfully request that we permitted to amend the application to include the sale of vehicles. Thank you.
Well, you agree to have outdoor storage permitted only as per the site plan?
Yes.
Any other questions from the board?
Can we just clarify, you're selling vehicles, are they out, are they displayed outside or you're just selling from inside?
Commercial vehicles is typically sold at the client's place of business. So the trucks are prepped, and then we would deliver them to the customer as they're done. Most of the trucks are custom-built. It, it's very similar to what Penske does next door.
Do you display them outside for a show or have a big?
Some of the parking stalls will have a couple of trucks, but most of the trucks that we build are custom to the client's needs.
So they call you, specify what they want?
No showroom?
No, no showroom. Commercial trucks are kind of unique that way. It's been a commercial sales and service operation for at least twenty-five years, if not longer than that. There were Mitsubishi Truck Dealership there, and they got that franchise, I believe, in nineteen eighty-nine. So Branca Brothers was the operation that we purchased. So Branca Brothers Trucks was Mitsubishi Truck Dealership, and at one point it was actually a Kenworth Dealership. But that was even before then. But we have a permit to sell from the state, we had a permit to sell vehicles. I didn't know there was anything that was missing, to be honest with you.
So this outdoor storage, those are the trucks you're working on? There's not like signs for sale that people come to the site?
No, no.
Yes. So the outdoor storage of eleven trucks, we need repair as per the site plan?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to?
Amend?
Amend number five to read, allow outdoor storage of eleven trucks waiting repair.
As per site plan?
As per site plan.
For application twenty-five, one fifty-eight. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so again, we will close the hearing, reserve decision, leave the record open. You get the decision in the mail?
We'll have to re-advertise for the.
We'll be in contact about how to proceed.
Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, last but not least. All right, application twenty-five dash one sixty, Cool Fox LLC, N. Cole Peg. Name and address for the record?
Joseph Fuchs, sixteen Larry Lane, West Islip, Newark, one-one-seven-nine-five.
Do you affirm to tell the truth?
I do.
For the record, we have a planning division memo dated September seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. Environmental control memo dated September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. This application will need a negative declaration. Fire marshal memo dated September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. Have you received a copy of this?
Can I confirm? I'm, I'm pretty sure I have, but.
And a survey by Paul Berlinski, Land Surveying dated Septi-, oh, October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, updated. And tax map acting as an area map, and?
Madam Chair, there's four photographs, site plan by Combined Resources Consulting and Design dated July seventeen, two thousand twenty-three.
All right, what would you like to?
So, um, um, we have four items in front of you all on the board. We want to be a public garage, we want to have parking. There's two lots on the property. I've seen it mentioned as front lot, but I'm going to look at it from a compass point of view. So that wedge corner, that's the east lot, I think that's be references the front lot by some people. And the back lot, the long rectangle, that's the north lot. They're both marked, they will be marked for parking, but we're asking for parking stalls and outside storage in the back lot. And we're, we're a, a touch off of the required amount, right? So there's twenty-eight required, we're asking for twenty-three. And to be clear, this business, Cool Fox, we manufacture refrigerated vans. So we take a, everything that comes to us, ninety-five percent of the vehicles that come to us are brand new, direct from the factory. And we take that steel box, then insulate it, and we mount the refrigerator on it. And then it goes out to customers both locally and up and down the East Coast. While they're being worked on, takes three, four weeks from the day we get it to the day it leaves. So they rotate throughout the shop, and then between stations, as they're in the shop, they have to be parked elsewhere, they go outside. That's, all those white boxes you see, those are the vans that we're working on. All the people that work on that, I have twelve employees. They work a seven, a shop is open from essentially seven to seven. It's somewhat staggered based on their commute capabilities. There's two carpool guys at net twelve, so you'll see on average eight cars there a day, eight to nine cars there a day. I have two, two gentlemen that also take the train. So of the twenty-three parking spots that we're going to have, we're going to utilize, I'll go heavy and say we're going to use ten of them. So we have thirteen spare. I would like to use those for the vans as they rotate in and out. And then the outside storage that we're going to ask for, vans will also be there as well. Again, these are new, everything we work on is new, if it's not new, it's a year old. It's a significant investment people put in to these vans for us to do this work. So very rarely are they putting into something that's in disrepair. We don't work on junk, for, for lack of a better term. What we're working on also does not involve the refrigeration process. There's no hazardous material, there's no waste oil, there's, it's, there, there's, there's nothing to speak of as far as a hazardous material. This process that I'm in front of you today was born from the fire marshal making a visit to our place and finding quite a number of things that he wanted us to update. I purchased this building four years ago from a company who's owned it for thirty years. So in the process of us applying for updating our fire suppression system and alarm, it came about that we had to have a site plan, and this brings up our parking issues. That's, uh, that's why I'm in front of you.
Thank you. I'll turn the hearing over to Mr. Delavecchia.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you?
So your employee parking, that's going to be, I guess what we would call the east side?
I'm, I'm open to wherever they can park. You have to appreciate the aspect of this business is these, these vans move. It's six workstations within that building. We don't work on anything outside, absolutely not outside. It's a combination of carpentry and fiberglass work, all occurs inside. So really, it's first come, first served as far as the spots go. Like, my, my guys might pull up and they're going to go, there's three vans in an empty spot, they're going to park in between it. It's not a retail establishment, I don't have customers coming by. So it's, if it's not a van that we're working on, it's going to be one of my employees or myself parking there.
Yeah, because I drove by today, and, you know, I can't distinguish what's, what, you know, there's just vans everywhere.
Yeah, we try, we try and keep it early. One of those twelve employees is a full-time porter. His job is to obviously keep the inside clean, the outside clean, which is a lot of fun on a corner lot in that area, but also to keep the vans organized, right? Costs me money when they bang into each other, so it, it, it's organized chaos and, and, you know, I, I could walk you through it and share with you if anyone wants to come by and worry yourself to death on how we organize everything. But yeah, we, we do not park them in the street unless it's a case of they're moving things out of the way and there's a, you know, something dramatic that has to occur for us to park something on the street.
I mean, there were some cars parked on Bethpage and Reith today.
Okay.
And one of them on Reith was half on the street, half on the sidewalk.
That was probably me, white pickup.
Yeah.
That's me. I'm, I'm in a van there, yeah, so I can, I can change that. That, that's the, it was the apron into that lot, which we don't, we don't use the apron.
Got you.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to make sure that you're going to be able to comply with your site plan as you, you know, drive up.
I can, I have the room, you, you can see I have the room.
Oh, there's room, yeah. It's just a matter of, you know, sticking to it.
Absolutely, yep. One, one thing I'm not mentioning is, we do own a tractor trailer. If you saw it today, it's wedged against the building. That is on the road three or four days a week, picking up and delivering these things. But it does live with us overnight, and it does live, you know, if I don't, I don't have a job for it every day. So that does live onsite, and that does consume a ton of parking, but it never gets parked on the street. It's, it's always behind a gate, we don't idle it, it's brand new. It's, you know, we, we run a very, I know for the neighborhood, we run a very clean operation as far as, you know.
Besides for the cars everywhere, it's clean. Did you see the memo from environmental? I don't know if you have.
That I'd never received, no.
Do you have fifty-five gallon drums on site? Or will you ever have fifty-five gallon drums on site of liquids, et cetera?
I have empty resin drums from spray foam that we do. They're empty. We crush them on a weekly basis, I bring them to the scrap metal guy. They are never outside, ever, they never go outside. They are, what's in them, even when they're fill, is inert, it's isocyanate, it's not, it's not explosive at all. We do have a, we have a storage room that the fire marshal's been on site to see. It's got no electricity in it, that stores probably three gallons of flammable material.
There's just some recommendations from them that?
Okay.
I thought we'd just take a look at, make sure you comply with.
I'm curious, why would I not have seen this? Is, is, is it on me to, to, to find this?
Well, it's in that memo that you just grabbed.
Right, but I. Okay, that's, that's normal, okay, got you, thank you.
Do you agree to the four conditions? Page number two?
Page two.
Standard covenant, the standard covenants and restrictions for auto body repair, outdoor storage permitted only as per the site plan? Should be no outdoor storing or staging of vehicles permitted in the front yard?
Yep. And this front, am I understanding, what, what do we call on front yard?
Front of the building line, so this whole area.
It's like where you're stuck in the trailer.
My address is Reed Street, right, so that, to me, that, I'm not, I'm not trying to, I, I just want to be clear on what, what's expected of me. That side yard, we're not storing anything in?
In spots one through ten as you got labeled there, correct, Katie?
Yes, you're a corner lot, so you have two front yards, Reed Street and Bethpage Road.
Uh-huh.
So anything in front of your building, so all of this parking cannot be used for outdoor storage.
Okay, would, would, would a truck I own for my business be considered outside storage yard?
If you're leaving it there for overnight, yes.
Okay, well, that's, that's, I'm going to have to lease property to park a truck that I own. So that's, is there something that I can plead with the board on, on that for? That, that's not, I, there is no safe way for the driver when he backs in, that's the only way to do it. This is the only spot. He can back in on the north lot? It, it's, it's a hazard.
Parking inside the building for the night?
No, it, it, it's, it's seventy-five feet long. Yeah, yeah, no, it, it's, it's, it's an albatross, but it's a necessary one for, for my business. I, I don't know. I, 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 I don't want to make this a longer process than it has to be, and I don't want to lie to you and say, yeah, sure, I'm not going to park it there. It's, it's, it's a necessary evil for me.
I mean, during the day, you could be there, but overnight, we're saying.
Yeah, I mean, overnight's the problem, you know, it's, it, I can't tell my guy to take it home with him, and I, you know, I don't want it off-site where it's out of sight, out of mind, because, I mean, it's, generally what happens is they load it in the afternoon with the next day's work, and they'll leave at five in the morning to go up to Boston with it.
You can't back it into this?
The backyard, backing into that backyard, you can do it. It blocks, it's, it's a hazard, it blocks the road. That other one, you just, you come up, you, you face the wrong way on the shoulder, and you back straight in, and it fits perfect. The other way.
Facing the wrong way on the shoulder is also a hazard. I mean, I'm a truck driver, I could get in that lot.
It's for fifteen seconds, and he, and he backs in. The other way, he's got to, he's, first he's got to go, you can't do it on the driver's side, you have to do it on blind side. And Bethpage Road around that corner, just where that combined resources is, I mean, people are going fifty miles an hour. There's accidents, there's a pole just north of my building gets hit once every two years, because people fly around the corner. It's just, it's.
But he can't store it in the alleyway overnight?
What you?
Where you have all these spots with forty-one parking spots, he can't just?
That's what I mean, to get in that lot is, 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 is more dangerous than, than anything, yeah.
Yes, you would need to work with your professional design services and propose outdoor storage in the front yard, and that would have to get re-advertised. Outdoor storage is only permitted in the rear yard behind fencing. We advertise outdoor storage for you in your side yard, which is over here on the side of the building, to allow you to store vehicles here. That's not considered the front yard, that would be a separate variance that was not advertised or shown on the site plan.
Okay.
And then just to clarify, you're doing auto body work here as well?
No, I have, I don't know why that's on there, no.
There's no spray booth in there?
There is a spray booth, we spray spray foam in the inside of the van in there. There's no bodywork on premises.
So do we need, do we need to amend it or no?
I think we should add spray booth in there. That doesn't need to be re-advertized, we should just include it as a special exception.
So instead of auto body, just say end spray booth?
With the spray booth.
So, Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion to amend. Application twenty-five dash one sixty-one for variance number one to read end spray booth. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so the plan is for you to apply for? Would anyone like to be heard on this record? No, because no one is here. The plan is for you to apply for an outdoor storage.
If you want it in the front yard.
It has to, yeah, you'll have to do it.
Yeah.
I mean, I think you can get a truck in there, I drive, I, I mean, I can get a truck.
You can get in there, it's just, you, you block the road, and that, that road, people fly on that road.
You're going to have to wait, you got to get, stop the slow stick, stop traffic back to me.
I, I'd rather apply for the? Because the problem is, we park, so there's two. See the, see the gray right in the middle of that north lot? That's the entrance into the building for my guys to bring the work in and out. And I, the truck just, I, I, he would sit there and have to work it all the way over against the fence. It's, it's, it's not, it's, it doesn't make sense.
I would recommend you speak, you have to make these plans, see if you can, see if you can work on it now, and then go to a meeting with planning to go over it.
All right, so we will close the hearing, reserve decision, leave the record open. You guys will be in contact.
I think you also have to meet with fire marshal too, right?
Yeah, yes.
Say that again?
You also have to meet with the fire marshal?
Everything that's, everything else that's going on after this is continued on this. So what, we have a plumbing, I have a fire suppression company queued up, ready to go, to change everything the fire marshal wants me to change. But I can't do that till I have a building permit, which is continued on this.
Got you.
Okay, thank you.